Okay. I'd like to call the committee of the whole budget meeting of October 30th, 2019 to order. I'd like to begin by reading a safety notice. In the event of an emergency, please evacuate councils, chambers to the nearest exit through the chamber doors and obey all instructions given by our clerk, Julie Kirkhalos. Julie, can you raise your hand so we know you are the leader? If assistance is required, please see the clerk. Once you have evacuated the building, please gather in the front parking lot outside of Town Hall at the mustering station. Also, the Town of Lincoln Committee and Council meetings are posted on our YouTube channel. I would like to thank the public for attending the meeting this evening. And I just want to remind everyone of our rules for engagement to please be respectful while the others are speaking and to please refrain from clapping. Delegations, Mr. Kirkhalos will have five minutes to speak and are asked to stay focused and on task. Please remember to silence all cellular devices. Roll call, we've got regrets from Council Ranjima. We've got staff in attendance this evening. Are there any declarations of interest? I see none. There are no statutory public meetings on the agenda. We have no delegations this evening. Consent items, we have none. So, regular agenda, we are now considering item 7.1, 2020 capital budget review. Our CIO, Mr. Kirkhalos, and Acting Director of Finance and Administration, Terry Trawala, will be providing a presentation. You're up, sir.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, and to members of council, thank you for that introduction. And as you highlighted, Counselor, a number of senior staff are here and able to answer questions following the presentation. I will do my best to go through this presentation as quickly as possible. Likely will take me a little bit longer than the five minutes you stipulated. I will actually be doing most of the presentation on my own, but definitely Terry is here to answer any of the finance questions. And as I said, members of the senior team here to answer any questions as it relates to the specific projects. So quickly, from the perspective of what we look to discuss tonight, an introduction to the capital budget that builds on the capital budget 101 that we took members of council through in July, followed by some business drivers and council considerations in terms of background information. And then we will move to a chair-led Q and A in terms of the various projects, share with you the budget timeline, and of course, next steps and anything you want us to be bringing back. So in terms of an introduction, some of this stuff, again, you know, as I say every time I'm in front of, every time I am in front of you, is repetitive in nature, but I think it's important to highlight it and to continue to highlight it both for those watching and for members of council. So why do we budget? Fiscal accountability, really, it's about the appropriate manage of our finances and of course, our long-term borrowing, which we refer to as debt. It is about the alignment of financial resources that the town has and doing so in an evidence-based perspective. It's about financial management, which includes forecasting and internal controls. And this presentation will start taking you through a little bit more of that forecasting piece. And at the end of the day, we do it to improve the life and well-being of our citizens and our community. So a few facts. Our growth continues to be one of the highest in the Niagara region at almost 6%. As we've highlighted a number of times, our growth will increase by approximately 50% over the next 10 to 12 years, max, or topping out at about 32,000. We continue to be the fourth fastest-growing municipality in Niagara this year. And there you see our age distribution within average median age of 42.9. So Lincoln planning and building activity. This is a slide and some information that you will see in next month's Planning and Economic Development Committee agenda, something that's going to be brought forward. I decided to cut it out of that report and show council this as part of the budget process. And I chose to do that, and you see this big circle that looks at last term and the beginning of this term. And you see definitely the number as it pertains to this year already for three-quarters of the year, topping $140 million, 704 permits issued, and 528 of those permits issued being for residential units. That is a huge number. It significantly surpasses anything we've done in any previous year. Last year was our highest year historically that we've ever had at 127 million. And again, three-quarters of the way through this year, we are at 140 million, almost 141 million. When you look at, again, from 2014 to where we are now, and you take those numbers and you add them up, we are almost at half a billion dollars, and that's billion with a B, in terms of construction activity in our community. So when you see the projects, when you see the capital lists before you, when you see the operating budget that's coming, and the staff resources and the staff expenditures that oftentimes go along with the work that we do, it does tie back to this particular chart. It does tie back to the particular work we're doing. And each of these units that are constructed, at the end of the day, result in increased taxes and impact to a positive nature our economic tax base. So the capital budget. Why do we have a capital budget? What does the capital budget do specifically? It pays for investment in municipal infrastructure. It ensures timely rehabilitation of existing town-owned assets. It really is a plan that highlights and lays out how we purchase, build, maintain, repair, and replace our assets. And capital assets also directly and indirectly impact the operating budget. This is something that we've spoken to you before. There are impacts every time we bring on new capital, every time we construct a new facility, or bring on an additional park, or whatever it may be. We always are looking at both the capital and operating impacts that often go with these budgets to cover those day-to-day operating expenses that are often associated with the asset. Historically, we haven't talked a lot about long-term borrowing, but I think it's an important conversation to continue to have. It's something that's timely and that you're hearing both from a regional perspective, you're hearing it as it relates to a number of other municipalities. And so, long-term borrowing, some people call it debankering, we call it debt, you can refer to it by all of those means, but it really is important to the conversations we have in terms of the projects that we invest in and how we choose to pay for them. So why do we have long-term borrowing, or why do we use long-term borrowing? It really is about ensuring the long-term financial flexibility and sustainability of the community. There's absolutely certain things that make sense that we use long-term borrowing for. We've heard from our financial advisors, the indicators that point to the fact that there are good things, there are pieces of infrastructure that we should use long-term borrowing for. Interest rates are incredibly low at this particular point in time, so for a number of municipalities that are looking at investing in projects, there are some benefits to using long-term borrowing. It does limit our financial risk and exposure, as I highlighted. It does minimize the long-term cost of financing. And it's investment in community assets that oftentimes attract that further economic activity. So there are benefits beyond just the infrastructure itself that gets created, that we often build, there's that economic output and economic activity that is tangential but equally important when we invest in various projects. Municipalities take on debt to appropriately finance infrastructure and other capital It is a useful approach, it's a useful tool, it's a useful methodology to spread costs of assets over the useful life. So what does that mean? It means that they're being paid for by people that are deriving the benefit from them over that long period of time. It does limit internal and external financing sources. And so one of the lenses, one of the analysis, one of the tools that we use when we're looking at projects and how we fund them is absolutely this element of long-term borrowing to ensure that we can deliver on the projects and do it in a way that maintains our cash flow, our liquidity, and all the other variables that are important in terms of the financial health of a community and of a municipality. Of course, I mentioned the lower interest rates right now. So there's definitely a benefit to lower, or to borrow when interest rates are lower than the rate of inflation, and that's what we're actually seeing right now. So it does make sense, as I said, whether it's CIBC or other financial bodies that have come before council and presented, a lot of them are giving that same advice to their municipal clients, that now is the time, if you're going to look at long-term borrowing to fund projects, that you tie into the rates that are currently before you. So the municipal act also lays out criteria for debt and for long-term borrowing. And again, I think it's important, you know, to highlight these for council. So it does, at the end of the day, I'll summarize those first three points under the municipal act. It does say there is a maximum of 25% of own-source revenues that we can borrow for. I will highlight and jump down to the bottom. Currently, we're at a little over 4%. That is in what I would consider in the Niagara context amongst the municipalities that are on the lower end. A number of municipalities are considerably higher than that. You hear that, or I've highlighted that the range for municipalities, both in Niagara and out of Niagara, really are in that 10% to 15% range that have been set as limits for that. After this budget, Lincoln will approach approximately 6% in terms of that threshold or that limit, well beneath council's self-imposed 10% that has been set and has been in place for a number of years. And again, well below the 15% that is typical amongst municipalities and significantly lower than the provincial average of 25%. Again, if you look at a number of municipalities around us, we do see some that are in the 14% range, 18% range, a few that are a little bit lower than we are, but we are definitely in that lower quadrant. Here's a chart that we share with council every year that really shows what I said in a picture form in terms of where we're at currently right now. That blue line in the middle is that 10% threshold that we've set in terms of our own internal controls. The green line is the provincial average of 25%. And the purple bar graph at the bottom is our projection over the next four to five years in terms of where we're at. So budget drivers and items for council considerations. I think oftentimes we're asked, what goes into making the decisions that come before you? How do we come up with a list of, whether it be 30 projects, whether it be 40 projects? What is the analysis that the senior team goes through to come up with these recommendations? And so these are the items that we look at. This is the analysis and the lens that we use. And so council priorities, service level growth, asset management, new capital growth, strategic asset investment, internal capacity, and operational needs. As I said, there's other items that go into how do we develop that list? A number I've highlighted there before, but of course, we are talking to council on a regular basis. I know we say we're talking to you year-round, we're listening to you year-round, and I think that's absolutely a key element of this. You'll see in your packages, we do have a report that talks about engagement, that talks about a survey that we did, as well as a new methodology where we had what I would consider a mini-focus groups in terms of reaching out to organizations, having them meet with their own respective teams and providing us feedback that is a little bit different than the typical survey. And I thought, and we thought, going out in an approach that was slightly different would increase the level of engagement and the type of comments we got. But other items that go into how we decide on these capital projects, in addition to the ones on the previous slide, do include our meetings with the treasurer, myself, and the ward counselors. Of course, we're always listening at community ward meetings. We've had a number this month. We hear what residents say. A number of staff are there, taking that input, taking what we hear, and using that on a constant basis in our decision-making. And of course, the strategic priority lens that we try to put to it in terms of the work we've done over the last number of months with our consultant and members of council on those priorities. Regulatory compliance and risk management. So in other words, the legal, health and safety items that we have to do, or that we're mandated to do, or that we have to do to a certain level, those play into what we do and how we make decisions. And then again, the other items here that I highlighted that were on the previous page. So business drivers and community impact. Collectively, there is a responsibility, and I know council knows this, we as your staff know this, but there is a responsibility for continued investment in the community. We hear that often when we're out engaging with members of the community. Tax increases over the past 10 years, we often give you that average. We're at about 4.5 or so percent in terms of the averages over the last decade, but they've allowed us to, to a varying degree, sustain services. And so those increases, I think, have been important. They've invested in important foundational infrastructure. As I've highlighted here, over the last four to five years, council has begun to invest in the future, and we're starting to see those types of investments. And I think the one that is the most significant is the dedicated infrastructure levy. It continues to grow. Council continues to invest in that over the last three years. So it has been a very forward-thinking approach to infrastructure investment. We look at things in terms of our growth projections. As much as on any given year, we're getting growth projections, those change based on decisions that are made both within our community, but even outside our community that impact us. Provincial, federal legislation, the difference and the differing ways in which decisions are made. Climate change and significant weather events. So we're seeing the impacts to our budgets, and we have seen the impacts to our budgets over the last number of years as it relates to climate change and weather events. The infrastructure gap, you've heard us talk about that. You've heard us talk about the importance of investing in infrastructure. And again, there's factors that council has to wrestle with, that we have to wrestle with on a daily basis as it relates to budgets and where and how we choose to invest that are beyond, I think, you know, our collective control. Decisions get made at other levels, decisions get made that are more on a global nature. And so those things often are things that we feel, we feel at a very significant level in terms of our budgets and the impacts. So every year, we share with you this particular slide. You know, we continue to look at our asset management plan, and we'll have a more updated number next year, but council is responsible. And here's the breakdown of it, of almost $400 million in assets, the majority of those assets being road assets. And then as new initiatives are undertaken, as new projects are undertaken, those numbers will change, and we will see more in those various other categories. For instance, building, water and wastewater as we look at some of the investments coming in the next number of years in those particular areas. So capital considerations, we often talk about the levy piece, and I will take you through what this particular impact looks like from the perspective of our capital budget, but the levy portion is within policy. Council has set a policy of using the construction price index as its increase to the capital levy portion of our capital budget. And again, I will take you through those numbers in future slides. It is a holistic budget, it is a holistic capital budget that we've put before council that does seek to have continued investment in all our assets, both hard infrastructure and soft infrastructure. We continue to try to have a resident-focused approach to what we're doing, and one that is informed by good financial sustainability practices. I know I sent members of council towards the end of last week, a documentation and what I would call a validation from the provincial government and the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing as it related to a number of categories that they assess in terms of every municipality's financial sustainability and financial wherewithal. And Lincoln scored high in, I would say, almost every single category on that particular list. So I think that's a testament to the decisions that previous councils and this council has made and continues to make. We have segmented projects by categories, again, the various categories that we've shared with you in the past. It does help us communicate the investment that council continues to make. So they are segmented by those particular service components as well. The future state council is envisioning as part of the strategic priority work undertaken. And so you will hear more about that strategic alignment. I know that's very important at council. A number of counselors, members of council have highlighted that particular piece in terms of finishing our work with Lori and her team as it relates to our strategic priorities and how we use those to assess budget and the importance of budget. All of you do have a document on your desks that looks to, I think, put together those strategic priorities and see where we're at. But we will be having subsequent meetings to bring that to a closure and deliver on, I think, what council's desire is, similar to what you did last term, although a little bit different this year, the future focus document that really laid out a roadmap for what council wanted to accomplish at the end of the day. So here are our infrastructure categories. You'll see projects are bundled in these particular areas. There are four areas: transportation, environmental services, social infrastructure, and corporate So in terms of our council strategic priorities, I thought it was important, I think, just to bring this conversation in a little bit into the budget process. I did highlight on previous slides that we do use those strategic priorities, or what we've got so far as it relates to those strategic priorities, as one of the lenses, among other lenses, to make the decisions that we have before you. So priority one, everyone will recall, we both defined them, we added strategic objectives, and we tried to write the priority in a way that was forward-thinking. I've highlighted priorities one, two, three, and four here for council. We will be, again, as I said, working with council to make sure we align the particular project and tactics and the associated key results with them. But just to take you through this, our first one was welcoming, and you see the definition there to be a welcoming community for people, fresh ideas and businesses. And then the more detailed definition around striving to create a welcoming environment that is open to fresh ideas and perspectives. Where residents and businesses participate fully in the social, cultural, and economic life of the town, and where new people and businesses discover and integrate with our community as a desirable place to grow, prosper, and belong. So the strategic objectives are really what starts us to get, starts us down that path of more detailed projects and tactics and the how we will achieve those particular items. And so you see four highlighted there. Continue to be welcoming and improve social and economic inclusion. Become a talent magnet. Continue to govern and lead in a transparent and effective manner, and create a business-friendly environment. In other words, being open for business. You've got number two here, priority number two, connected, to connect all of Lincoln, people, places, and our natural landscapes. I think to save time, I won't read each of these for you, they're in front of you. You've also got a colorful piece, I can definitely answer any questions to them. But if I go down to the strategic objectives piece, continue to expand cultural and community initiatives and program offerings, champion environmental stewardship and smart growth, integrate mobility and transportation options, and balanced and diversified housing options. Number three, vibrant, to create a happy, healthy, and prosperous community. And similarly, you've got definitions and strategic objectives beneath them. And number four, resilient, to be intentional in building stronger community resilience. So again, to try to save us some time, I won't go through each of the objectives there. So this is your first, I think, you know, summary slide. You'll see a breakdown by those respective categories that we've highlighted before. Transportation, really being our roads in the amount of almost $10 million, so $9.7 million there. Environment and safety, so that's stormwater, that's waterworks, that's fire and rescue at close to 14.8 million. Our social infrastructure at almost $4 million at 3.889, which includes cemetery facilities, parks. Our corporate infrastructure at 1.837 million, and that is facilities, vehicles, equipment. Our library, and I'd be remiss if I didn't mention, our library CEO, Julie Andrews, is here this evening, IT and tourism. So you see a total capital budget this year of a little over $30 million. This slide, this graph here lays out for you how those particular items are being funded. You'll see on the right-hand slide of, or the right-hand side of this picture, we've pulled out the capital levy portion, that is the portion that taxpayers are responsible for. That is the 1.408 million that's there, and you see that apportioned by those four categories. We are tapping into $8 million of dedicated reserve funds, almost $9.5 million of development charges, and we are looking at $10 million in long-term borrowing. So a few highlights, as I highlighted on the previous slide, we have approximately $30.2 million in capital project investment for 2020. That is 40 projects. The impact of the levy is $1.4 million approximately in 2020. This is the base budget amount that we have in place. This is really almost the same as last year. As I highlighted before, we have a policy that says we only increase our levy, our capital levy, by the CPI index. And so you are seeing a $64,000 increase to the tax levy as it relates to this capital budget that's before you. There are five, and I've pulled out five major construction projects that account for the overall increase in capital. I think it comes as no surprise, this capital budget is more than last year, it's more than we've done in the past. But there are a number of key projects, and I think that the biggest one and the first one that I've highlighted there is Prudom's, so almost $8 million for Prudom's in terms of the water infrastructure that's required, and that'll be running down Jordan Road. We have $1.1 million for the Hickson Street Pumping Station. Rotary Park, formerly known as Serena Park Development, that is a $3 million project. Lincoln Avenue Phase 1 reconstruction is $2.1 million, and Rittenhouse Road Reconstruction at $2.65 million. Those are really the five major projects. You remove those projects, we are very much in line with where we've been in previous None of these have an impact to the tax levy. I do want to spend some time, I think, emphasizing that, because I think it's an important point. They are either DC-funded, reserve-funded, or are part of our long-term borrowing strategy as it relates to this particular budget. So you're probably asking me why, or at least I hope you're asking me, you know, why do we see a $30 million capital program? So I take you back to this slide. It's really about the numbers that are in this particular slide. You've got construction value, which leads to jobs, which leads to increased revenues happening everywhere around you. It's happening in our community here. And so that's what's driving a capital budget that requires us to time our works that are funded externally, that are funded by the development community with the construction activity that's going on. So what else is driving the budget? I think in the past, we haven't spent enough time probably talking to you about forecasting, whether that be tax revenue forecasting, what's coming down the pipe in terms of forecasting, or just the development charges that are coming in to the municipality. And I think it's an important, probably the most important slide we have, I think, in this particular presentation, is this one around forecasting. And I do want to commit to council that moving forward, we will get better at, continue to focus on, however you want to phrase that, or look at that, on how we do forecasting. It is something that I think is important, especially for a fast-growing municipality like ourselves. So there's some numbers there, I'm going to try to walk you through them. Again, if you have any questions, I can take those questions at the end, and a number of staff are ready to answer this particular question. But I've highlighted there the number of units we currently have now in 2018 in terms of households, and that's 8,900. I've also highlighted what the next 10 and 20 years looks like. And so in 2028, our households will increase to 10,455, or approximately 1,500 households, so an increase of 17% in the next 10 years. In 2041, a little over 20 years from now, at full build-out, that number will be 12,265. So 3,500 more than we currently have, and an increase from 2028 of a little bit more than 1,600. The total amount of DCs that we will be collecting over the next five years, council will recall, we did a DC bylaw, DC study last year. We increased our development charges in terms of the monies we were going to the development industry for to support projects. And so we will be collecting approximately $50 million in development charges over the next decade from the various projects and the various developments that are coming down the pipe. I think another important part of that conversation is really the tax revenue. And so this really plays into, you know, what does the future look like? Why are we investing now? What does sustainability look like 10 years from now, 20 years from now? And so the number that I want to share with you, so our total tax revenue that we receive in 2019 this year will be 16.5 million. So that's a yearly amount. So that's a yearly amount. If I forecast, and we forecast to 2028, we will see a $3.3 million increase. So come 2028 and beyond, if no other development was to take place following 2028, we would see $20 million coming in to municipal offers to do the work we need to do, to invest in the capital we need to invest in. So that is an increase of greater than 20%. And that doesn't take into account any budget increases, whether they be 1%, 2%, or 3% that council makes. That is strictly the revenue from households that we will see coming in. So you see us, I think, increasing the number of households by 17%, but income at 20%. That difference of three is important, it's what we want to see, and the annual growth related to tax increasing by 3.3 million. This is a very conservative estimate. I think it's important that we look at estimates that are realistic, and so I think, again, this is what's driving the investment that we're making. So what to expect from us moving forward as we look at capital? Continued asset management planning. Terry and our finance team have shared with you some of those next steps, and will continue to share with you how we will look at asset management planning, working with our various departments. The capital plan. I think you probably see projects that, and we often get asked, you know, how do projects come forward? We have a 10-year capital plan that is fluid, and it's meant to be fluid. We have a four-year plan that is a little bit more specific that you've got in your packages. But this past year, we spent, or over the last year and a half, almost two years, we spent a considerable amount of time developing the transportation master plan and the parks, recreation, and culture master plan. Those updates need to be incorporated into our long-term plans, and they will be. And so you will see those conversations, those notions, those ideas, those projects be incorporated into our plans. Financial sustainability and some of the associated policies that go with that, you will see rolled out over the coming months and into next year. And with that, as I highlighted earlier, the expanded forecasting. And efficiency opportunities. We often get asked, are we looking at efficiencies? Are we looking at how we do business? Can we do business different? So we continue to explore those. And right now, we've got a corporate systems review going on. I think that will also provide recommendations for how we do business and how we continue to be efficient. We are looking at various shared service models with other municipalities as well in terms of bulk buying, so that work will continue. There's a couple of projects here I did want to, or a couple of efficiency, I think, opportunities that we've already seized on some projects here. And so I thought it was important. Chair Pachariva, you often talk to us about life cycles and the importance of not necessarily always looking at a life cycle approach to various assets. I'm happy to report, definitely as it relates to printers and monitors, we no longer life cycle those items within our IT department. They're only replaced when they die, and I think that's what people expect. That's an important piece of what we do. Improved internet for recreation facilities, connectivity for staff and residents. It is about looking at customer service and the importance of that. Fleet expansion. Director Graham can speak to this at the appropriate time, should council have any questions. But some of our purchases are really looking at ways where we can invest in one piece of infrastructure but use it for multiple job functions. And so we're talking about a dump truck snowplow that we're going to pilot and the roll-off elements of that. And I'm not as familiar with this particular item, so again, if you have any questions on it, Director Graham can speak to it. Our culvert replacement, road resurfacing, and rehab program, again, we always try to look at economies of scale in terms of clustering work to both minimize costs for us, but ultimately the disruption across the community and to our residents. The prudums water main upgrades, we've investigated, we have investigated and are investigating further, the contract bundling opportunities with that, which includes some of the work around Victoria Avenue Water Main and the QEW crossing and how that works. And of course, the projects 12 and 39 in terms of Red Maple, Storm Sewer, and Lincoln Avenue, looking at incorporating our off-site road and infrastructure upgrades as part of that development agreement, again, to seek as much as possible a benefit to the municipality. So I will now turn it over to Councilor Pachariva. I definitely can answer any questions on the first part of the presentation, and then we will go into looking at each one of our capital projects.
Thank you very much, Mike. That was a thorough review of the guiding principles and how we're going to approach and attack this year's budget. So like we usually do, and I think we'll go through the capital projects one by one this evening, we're not going to be debating the merits of these projects. We can ask questions of clarification, we can ask for additional information, we can ask relevance, and we'll take it from there and go through one by one. But I know the mayor wanted to make a few comments before we delve into this part, given, you know, the flavor of the ward meetings and such, and she's been out and about as the head of council, so your worship, if you would like to provide some opening, an opening salvo, and then I will follow it up.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I think over the last, possibly close to two months, we've had really a lot of... We've had an opportunity to go to the public over and over again. And I think last night at the Ward Three meeting, that aggregate of exposure was really quite, I think, really well demonstrated by the response of, I guess, 60 or 70 people, I'm not too sure, but it was certainly a very good number. And so I think that each ward has provided all of us with the opportunity to have that exposure. And it's a very authentic way, I believe, of getting, of testing the tone of the community, no question about it. So there are a few things that I want to reinforce, and I'm interested in reinforcing them because I believe that they have an impact on how we should view the list based on how people are responding to the council and to the staff when they are in the community, Mr. Chairman. So the whole issue of access and availability is really important to people, and it comes through over and over again, particularly after public meetings. The issue of transparency, again, at the meeting that Councilor Foster had and that a number of us were at, questions are being asked, the challenge is there. It's the only meeting that I've been to where the issue of taxes came up, although it did come up in Ward One as well. Important, though, is along with it comes this belief around openness and transparency. Those are the words that are used. And I believe that because the counselors in their wards and the staff that support them are able to share with confidence the responses, the answers to questions, that there is a very strong feeling within the community that the council are, have plans, that they're not a distracted group with what's going on, that plans are well thought out, and that we have a whole-town approach. And I believe that all of this lays the groundwork for a challenging budget. So whether it was planning meetings, whether it was cannabis, whether it was Counselor Foster's meeting, if it was, whether it was the four ward meetings, whether it was the Rittenhouse Road meeting, whether it's those ongoing meetings that we have around safety issues and the blitzes in the, in the community and what comes back to us from the public, we are in a very, very good position to bring this budget forward. So we won't debate the facts tonight, but we will get to the point where we're going to debate the facts. And I really encourage that we don't second-guess public opinion because I think the public have been feeding us information very authentically through all of these months. And we have a mandate, we have a mandate because we were re-elected and we're here, and so we need to be comfortable that without that mandate, we wouldn't be able to make tough decisions. So the list, of course, is what the staff are saying, things that are on the list are for the right reasons. And we're going to replace that with our own beliefs about what needs to remain on the list. We're following strong policy, which I actually had forgotten about the formula that we were using for capital, and so that $30,000 does not, it comes from a place, from a good, solid place. And so I just want to encourage everyone, of course, you know, to just embrace this with the most positive, in the most positive light, because we are in a very good position. We've worked hard to be in this position, and I look forward to the debates and the final results. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mayor Easton. And my vice chair on budget, Councilor Russell. But you've got to, there we go. Excellent.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of quick questions regarding the presentation that was presented. Based on accountability for council, I always question why we don't ever include the financial well-being of the town as far as their long-term debt obligations and their reserve trends as they've gone maybe for the last five or 10 years. Is that possible to provide an update, just to give us an adequate idea of where we are and where we've been, and might be where we're going?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I mean, I'll definitely look to Terry to chime in, but my, I think my simple answer would be yes, absolutely, we can provide some of that trending.
Okay, thank you. My other question, Mr. Chair, one more follow-up. On that graph, so the, the bars on the bottom, they show the total debt charges, which would be the principal, and the interest based on a forecast, again, going from 2020 to 2025. Is that any inclusion of future debt additions, or is it just current debt obligations with interest rate increases?
Through you, Mr. Chair. And that is including future debt obligations.
Okay. Projected future debt obligations.
Subject to council approval, of course, yes.
So one last follow-up then as well. Is there any thought processes, once we do hit a plateau on our growth, that we run some risks of that ratio exceeding what would be acceptable based on our current municipal requirements?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Absolutely, I think it's a consideration that we take into account. What you don't see here is the projections beyond 2025, because I think we need to do some more asset management work. But you definitely see that chart that looks to be increasing now start decreasing and definitely level off, cognizant that revenues will level off, growth will level off, and we won't have those benefits. So again, I think that's one of the key reasons we're in front of you now with the number of projects we're in front of you now with, is that now we're reaping the revenue or we're reaping the benefits of that growth. So make the investment now because we won't have that opportunity to later. But yes, definitely, if we saw the projections here, I've seen charts, although again, we haven't incorporated, I think, our new plans into that, that show this chart, kind of do that, you know, classic bell curve and start to come down and level off. To what level, we're not sure yet, and I think that some of that work needs to continue to occur with our asset management plan.
So the future plan that would also include a heavier contribution to pay off the debt as that new revenue comes in?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I mean, I'll definitely look to Terry to speak to that. I don't think we've made those decisions yet, so I don't want to assume that that's what we would be doing. Of course, we'd be looking at paying off our debt through those opportunities, but I think we need to look at the life cycle of those particular assets that we're bringing on and what that looks like. But we can definitely share with you, I think, some of those longer-term projections. Again, we don't, the level of detail and I think specificity to the data is not totally there, but I think as we move forward with next year and beyond, and our plans get into a better position, we'll be able to provide that information.
Councilor McLaughlin.
Thank you, Chair Pachariva. Just, like, I'm looking at that pie graph, that caught my eye as well. Like, I see stability 2018, 2019, 2018 a bit of a jump, and then '21 and '22, I consider those significant jumps. Is there, is there, what's the thought, what do you see down the road that would initiate those sort of spikes?
So, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna look to a number of stuff. I think Terry can speak to it, definitely a high level, but Director Graham and McKay and others can maybe speak to the various projects that are incorporated in there that see that. But definitely, you're saying prudums, that definitely is one of those items that's in there, as well as other development-related projects. But I will definitely let others chime in here.
So through the chair, with the graph, where you see it dip in 2018 and 2019, we had some debt that matured, and so we didn't have to pay them any, anymore. With our long-term borrowing, we don't actually issue it until the project is complete, and then we have some time that we have to go through a process in order to get the funds from Infrastructure Ontario or the region, or whoever's going to be providing us that long-term debt. And the actual payments don't start until the year after we get those payments, so the dip that you see in 2018, 2019, and even in 2020, those are just from debt that has gone off the books, and then starting in '21, '22, we start putting debt back onto the books. So if you'll notice, 2016 and 2017, they were going up as well. If the debt hadn't finished, it would probably have kept going straight.
Through you, Mr. Chair. If I could also ask, definitely Dave Van Doren Shannon, provide some comments on some of those just outlooks over the next two to four years in terms of projects that we potentially, again, subject to council approval, are planning for as it relates to projects coming on.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple points about some big projects come, looking over the next few years. So when you look at 2021, that's when we're planning on making that big Jordan Village Improvement investment. That's a really big project, so you're seeing that drive up that cost in that year from road reconstruction, so that's a, that's a huge project. So you're seeing that effect there. As you move into, you know, 2022, you know, we're anticipating a lot of work in Jordan Station as a result of the Phelps Development, a lot of road reconstruction on Red Maple, Bridgeport, Queen Victoria. 2023, in terms of large projects, that's when we anticipate the region will be doing King Street and Vineland, and the town has a big share as it relates to that project for sidewalks, storm drainage. So that's a really big project that, you know, you're going to see a cost, high cost for in 2023. We're also looking at, we want to do Lincoln Avenue north of King Street to Green Lane, and then coming back along Green Lane to Cedar Brook in that '23 range. So that's another large road reconstruction project. And we're also more of a placeholder, but identifying road upgrades for Bartlett Road in Beansville as a result of our recent transportation master plan. We're looking at a truck bypass. We haven't really quantified what we have to do to the roads to make it a truck bypass. We have a study in this year's budget to help guide us to that point, but we're sort of forecasting in that 2023 to 2024, we might be making some large investments on Bartlett Road for truck bypass upgrades.
Okay. And if I may, maybe a follow-up, Mike, to Councilor Russell's question and Councilor McLaughlin's question. And we had received these in the past, maybe going back to 2010, 2012, to show the trending line of debt. But then also, we were provided with this in the past, the number of projects, and as those projects fall off, and like Terry said, we don't take on that debt until a year after the project finishes. So, you know, the Fleming Center is on there, the Gretzinger Pool is on there, Fairgrounds Road is on there, Gibson Street is on there. But at the same time, I'm sure, and correct me if I'm wrong, the Ontario Street debt has finally come off of that, or is that still there? So it's a nice historical look at, at how we fund projects and what's there, and we do take a prudent approach. You know, you can look at the line, we can go up to, to the 10%, and historically, we haven't, because we've been really fiscally responsible... we haven't, because we've been really fiscally responsible in not taking on additional debt until some of that old debt's retired. But, as Mr. Kerkopolis said, we've got a windfall of $50 million because of DC's. Interest rates are low, so now is the time to capitalize on that and make the investments based on the population growth. So, I think that would provide some clarity, you know, for the next meeting, if, if we could.
Through you, Mr. Chair. If I could just respond one more time to councillor McLough, and I think, in taking a look at our core infrastructure for your capital project forecast, I think it's a good, a good indication of the types of projects we're looking at, councillors. So in, in our budget binders, there was something that spoke to capital forecasts within that document. It does include, over the next four years, in a very specific way, the projects that we are looking at. Again, some will be funded through development charges, some through reserves, and, and some through various long-term borrowing parameters and opportunities that we see.
Just, thank you. I just, the concern I have is, should there be a bump in interest rates, where that would put us in the future down the road? And, and that's the only thing I concern. I, I have no problem with, you know, borrowing money when it's cheap to do things that people can appreciate and enjoy and take advantage of. However, at the same time, trying to decipher needs and wants, that's, that's, that's the trickiest part of this process.
Terry?
So, as a municipality, when we issue our debt, we're locked into our interest rates, so even if the interest rates change for everybody else, we're locked in, whatever period we pick, we're locked into those interest rates.
Okay, that's good. Thank you.
Okay. Councillor McPherson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and, and staying on that slide. So, so the blue line, in line with councillor Russell's request, is, is there's, there's some kind of formula that we've used to, to draw up that line. Can you, can you share? It looks, looks pretty flat, and, and, you know, rate of inflation, or, you know, and I would think this has got impact tied into it, as far as what are we gonna, what are we gonna get for tax revenues? It's also, I, I mean, I don't know what you're doing with the real estate market and what's happening as far as that. I mean, I know it's tough to get this line in an estimate, but, but we might have some headwinds coming up, you know, that over the next two or three or four years, we might, you know, we're, we're talking global recession, potentially. And I wonder if we, if we're conservative enough in here moving forward, so maybe just a question about what is, what is the formula that you've, you've used to come up with the blue line? Through you, Mr. Chair.
So, through the chair, I used inflation as the increase. If you look at the actual change from 2016, 2017, and 2018, they, they're not a straight line, because those are our actual ones. And then I used, like, 2.5% increase for our own source revenues per year going, yeah, going forward. And the own source revenue that's calculated on our financial information return, it does include our actual tax levy that we issue, and then as well, some of our other revenues that we get as well.
So based on our, our recent history, this is a very conservative look on the, on the revenue side of it, as we look at, at tax adjustments that are in excess of 2%, 2.5%. We're also looking at a, a, a market price that's probably double-digit, you know, so this is, this is a very flat look at what could be a very steep over the next three, four, five years.
Through the chair, yes, I tried to be more conservative with it. We are still quite below what our, our objective is, so I, I stayed on the more conservative side with it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Over to you, Mr. Kerkopolis, to start taking us through the 40 projects, if you would.
Through you, Mr. Chair. This is the, this is the chair-led Q and A. Definitely, I can take you through each one of these, but, you know, we can either do it where you're asking about each particular project, or, or I'm taking you through and reading each one of these. So I'm in your hands, Mr. Chair.
Well, you're standing, so why don't, why don't you take the lead? And you've got the staff there behind you to provide guidance, and, and, you know, if, quickly, you know, a quick overview of, you know, project number one, what it entails. I mean, council's read that. If there's any questions about it, any, any, any guidance, any follow-up, any additional information, and if not, we'll just, we'll just go through these.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
So, why don't we, maybe to lay out kind of a process in terms of how we're gonna go forward. Everyone has their green binder in front of them. In that green binder, why don't we start with project one? I'm not gonna read the entire project capital detailed sheet here, but our first one is IT equipment. You'll see the proposed expenditure here is $295,000, funded approximately $145,000 from the capital levy, and $150,000 from our equipment reserve. It does include the necessary server infrastructure, devices and workstations, some network issues, fiber optic, and some surveillance cameras that are definitely important there. The 295 is definitely broken out. We do have Terry here who can speak to that particular project. Should council have any questions on that at this particular point.
Mayor Easton.
Mr. Chair, and my only question is, would there be an opportunity for a group buy with, with this equipment?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I'll let Terry answer that, because we are part of the Niagara Purchasing Group, but she can speak to that particular piece.
Through the chair, so beyond the Niagara Purchasing Committee that we're a part of, our IT group also stays in contact with their counterparts at other municipalities as well. And as other areas are purchasing similar items, we do group buys. In 2019, we've joined with Grimsby to do a group buy for some infrastructure this year, so we'll continue to keep our eyes open for those opportunities.
Great, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Excellent. So I don't see any questions with respect to project number one. Project number two, and before you start, Mr. Kerkopolis, I just want to, if I had gold stars, I would give you some, because here's another case of efficiencies, where we're actually grouping the library in with a purchase-buy across the municipality, rather than have it as a standalone. So thank you very much.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Definitely can't take any credit for that, that is all Julie Andrews, who's here this evening, but I am excited about this particular budget ask. I don't often get excited about IT equipment asks, but this one is for the library, capital levy funding this, $45,125 to the tune of $30,125. We've got some donations in there, which is always great, and our equipment replacement reserve of $10,000. You'll see the various items that Julie and her team are looking to purchase. She can answer any questions you may have, but I love the 10 loner Chromebooks and the charge cart that is part of this particular budget ask.
Okay. No questions, project number three.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Project number three is the Gateway signage upgrading on the Q E W. This is a $75,000 ask, again, funded through our capital levy, and definitely aligns to our tourism strategy, our Gateway and Wayfinding Design Project. And either Mr. Brewer or Mr. D'Ani can answer any questions council may have on this.
Okay. No questions there? Project number four.
Project number four is the Fleming Library Office renovations, and this is a $30,000 renovation through, funded through our capital levy.
Number five, following facilities.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Our next project, you're right, does move into facilities away from the general government category, and here we have the Penn West roof replacement, and this is being funded from our dedicated Building and Facility Reserve Fund, and is a $135,000 expenditure for that facility.
Okay, we've got a couple of questions here. Mayor Easton.
Mr. Chair, my question is that I would like to have a tour of this building, to see what's happening up there. I don't want to go up on the roof particularly, but I, there's some other issues here, and I want to be able to see what's in the building, and therefore, how important it is to replace it.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, we can definitely, I think that, that effort is already in progress, in terms of scheduling that tour, that tour for Mayor Easton, and definitely any other councillor that would be interested in that. We can make sure that we facilitate that. This is part of our long-term strategic land holdings, in terms of some decisions that we may be for, that we may be before you in the future, as we look at just operational needs, as we look at this facility, and, and now that we've moved past governance, can have some, you know, other conversations on the BDSS precinct, for example. So, an important element, but definitely, Ms. McKay can speak to that if council has any specific questions on the project.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Burnet.
Thank you, Chair Patria. So, just, I just wanted to ask a question specifically, so I see that project five and project six are both roof repairs. Collectively, when you add them up, they're about $300,000. So I guess, through you, Mr. Chair, if you could just, for council's clarity, how long has this Penn West building been sitting vacant?
I'm gonna let Director McKay answer that question, Mr. Chair.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I'm gonna have to get back to you on that. I don't, I don't actually know when the previous tenants departed before the municipality purchased the building.
So, I mean, it wasn't a loaded question. I guess I, I just was trying to bring some clarity to the fact that, you know, this is a roof that was installed in 1985, so there's no doubt it's probably long past its, its shelf life. But the building has been sitting, to my recognition, recollection, for quite some time. So, you know, if we're gonna spend 135, and we're spending 157 on the other one, you know, collectively hoping we're gonna get some better pricing if we put out two roof tenders, I get that, but I would just hate to see us commit to 135, and then this building sit vacant for another two or three years. You know, we were, we were in Ottawa, we spoke to Senator Harder about some funding opportunities for this building to be used. I guess I just hope that things can align so that we spend the money, and the building's gonna be used, and we don't spend the money and it sits. So just, just a comment.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I mean, definitely noted. You know, we've got, I, I think, some more strategic opportunities, potentially with the Diamond Building facilities that is on the east side of Quarry Road, in terms of some of those opportunities around tourism and, and looking at our potential needs. So, definitely noted in terms of, you know, not wanting to invest in something like this and then keep the building vacant. Definitely from an operational perspective, there's some opportunities in the interim. We are storing things in the Penn West building currently, right now, but I think over the next number of months into next year, towards the end of next year, I think we're gonna be before you look at all our facility needs, and starting to make some critical decisions in terms of go or no-go, as it relates specifically to, again, this facility, the BDSS precinct, and what we do with the Penn West facility.
Okay, thank you. Councillor McLough.
Thank you, Chair. I'm, I'm echoing those same sentiments. There, I, I believe there's currently nothing in this building right now. Is there any plans, once the roof is put on, to use that building?
Yeah, there is.
Through you, Mr. Chair. There's actually quite a bit of, of storage in that building, both on the public works side and on the community services side, that the building is actually quite full right now.
Okay. And one more question.
Go ahead.
There's no plan to tear this building down in the future?
Through you, Mr. Chair. No, there is not. It's actually a very good site for us to use, both as a shared site for public works and community services, so if anything, we would have plans to expand the building and expand the usage of the space.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. And, and maybe to Ms. McKay and Mr. Graham, too. You know, the whole discussion about governance has been removed, looking at way to do things more effectively. At one time, that was home to the Public Works Yard and a sand dome, which could then be used to cover the top of the escarpment. So, looking for something like that in a long-term vision, you know, the sand dome here is probably the furthest north from any point in the municipality. And you see, you know, during winter, the, the plows and the, and the sanders driving on regional roads, empty to come back and fill. So looking forward to a business case coming forward to reactivate that, or a long-term plan to say, you know what, and if it's analysis of the GPS data, how do we do things better? How do we do things more efficient? And everything doesn't need to be under one roof. So, if there's a business case to say, we're gonna spend that money, we're going to utilize it more effectively, there might be rental opportunities, per se, that have been floated around, looking forward to all of that coming forward, so, thank you. And then last but not least, number seven, so the Heinen Drive Yard upgrades.
So again, through you, Mr. Chair. Director Graham can answer any specific questions, but this is a $120,000 project funded through our Building and Facility Reserve Fund. So as you can see from the description there, this is about relocating our, our fuel system and addressing some of those issues around de-icing and future salt storage.
Okay. And again, just a follow-up question, you know, from the last, you know, my last line, is this the best spot for that, given its location? Given its most northerly location and the distances to travel to each of the nine quadrants? I mean, there might be a better location for it down the road. So, Mr. Graham.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chairman. No, I mean, good points that you're making about the sand domes. I mean, I think we always envision we'll need one down below the escarpment in Beansville, that's where we have most of our urban roads, but definitely looking at opportunities in the future, if it's the Quarry Road area, more centralized for the, for above the escarpment towards Jordan. That's a, I mean, that does make a lot of sense when you look long-term. Yeah, if there's any specific questions on this project, I'd be happy to answer those.
Okay. Fantastic. Number eight, fleet expansion and replacement.
Through you, Mr. Chair. As you can see, this is a $980,000 request in terms of our fleet. We have broken that down almost 50/50, but approximately $467,500 for new vehicles and equipment, and then $512,000 for replacement vehicles and equipment. There are some revenue sources that are highlighted above in terms of how this is being funded. $115,000 of that 980 is the capital levy, and then you see the various apportionments for our equipment replacement reserve. Some salvage costs in terms of monies we'll be able to get back, and then some DC studies that we've been able, some DC study and some DC-funded projects that we've highlighted in here, as well as some of our Parkland DC study funds. So that makes up our $980,000, and again, Director Graham can speak and/or Director McKay to the various elements of our fleet requests. Should council have any further questions.
Yeah, we've got, we've got a few here, so Vice Chair Russell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, to probably Director Graham. What's, again, not to put you on the spot, but what's the average life cycle that you project these new vehicles to have, if you can give a ballpark?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to the councillor. So it depends on the, on the vehicle. If we're talking snowplows, large dump trucks, you know, we're into that 10, 11-year range. Pickup trucks, we go a little bit longer, you know, 12 years. It, it kind of depends on each piece of equipment, so.
The ones that we're retiring, would you say that they met their projected lifestyle or lifecycle, back when they were originally purchased?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, yes, I would say they did, yeah.
Councillor McLough.
Thank you, Chair Patria. Just curious about that roll-off dump truck. Dump boxes, flatbeds, tanks, et cetera, et cetera. What, what does the truck itself come with when you purchase it? Does it come with all three, or all of these attachments or accessories?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, yes, you can. Through, Mr. Chairman, yes, you can, you can order it with the different accessory, pieces that go on the back. So, we really want to try it because it really optimizes that investment for a typical dump truck snow plow. So, you know, you can take a dump box off, you can put a flatbed on, you can put a tank on. So, you know, we really want to look at, you know, maximizing the use of that vehicle. So, when we do order it, we would specify it with those different attachments.
So, I'm sorry, I'm just, I'm not clear. For, for the ask, the 241-875, what, what is that exactly buying you? Is that, is there, do you have to specify a box, a tank? Is that extra or is that just for the truck plus the accessories?
Through, Mr. Chairman, that would be everything included. So, what we've put in the budget for that roll-off unit would be the different attachments that we can get with that.
Okay.
I don't think that.
Thank you.
Mayor Easton.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to know a little bit about what impact, what is the impact around? Is it snow takeaway that we're talking about here? Is that what the agility of this will achieve? What, it sounds like a very interesting piece of equipment, but I want to know how it's going to be used.
Director Graham.
Thank you. Through, through, Mr. Chairman, to the mayor. So, I mean, it'll have a dump box like a conventional dump truck, so we'll be able to use it for snow plowing. We'll put sand and salt in the back of it. You can also haul dirt in it, gravel throughout the season. If we want to put a tank on it, we use water on a lot of our projects where we're compacting gravel and things like that. We can put a tank on it. Also, when we're looking at our anti-icing programs, when we want to spray the roads with beet juice to help provide anti-icing before we get precipitation, we could consider that type of use. You can have a flatbed so you can haul different things on, on the truck as well. So, it won't, wouldn't just be used for snow removal.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I'm curious to know how you get these things on and off and how efficiently you can do that. What, do we have equipment to do that? It sounds like it needs a crane or something.
Director Graham.
Through, Mr. Chairman, to the mayor. It's pretty cool. It actually just ro, rolls right off. Like, we saw one of these at one of the trade shows and it's pretty slick. You don't really need any additional equipment. It has, it rolls off and it has stands and then you can just park the flatbed there or the tank and you just back the truck up under it. So, we wouldn't need any additional equipment.
Okay. And, Mr. Chairman, I'm assuming when we talk about tanks, we're talking about something that carries water or what else? What else would we find in a tank?
Through, Mr. Chairman, so typically we could put water in that tank or we could use it for beet juice or brines for anti-icing in the wintertime.
Okay, so it has some special lining in it or it's made of special materials so we don't have to worry about corrosion? Is that the idea? I'm just trying to figure out how long these things are.
You know what, your worship, you're, you're kind of weedy here. You're, you're very, very weedy. You are not driving this vehicle, you are not operating this vehicle. I, we, we, we refer to the expert on this who specked it out, saw it at the trade show. Unless you're going to work part-time, I would just go with the expert and say, let's see it when it gets here. And he'll give you a ride.
Good, because I'm sorry, I just became so enthusiastic about it.
That's weedy.
All right, well, then let me ask this, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just make a comment, I mean, the way Dave describes it, I think I want to check out this vehicle.
My apologies, Mr. Chair.
It's okay.
But I, I noticed that you were very quick to recognize that I was in the weeds, so thank you so much.
Touche, girl, touche.
Now, but about the maintenance report, and I know I've asked about this before. So, I want to be careful I don't get in the weeds again. But when it says that the costs are higher than what the vehicle is actually worth, what am I supposed to assume from that? And if I say, okay, well, I trust Mr. Graham that he wouldn't put it on here if it wasn't the case. But is that the best we can do? I'm afraid to ask the question.
Well, no, no, that's okay. And I'll give you the, I'll give you the, I'll give you the gravity there because usually each year we get the old, we get the, the graph that provides the cost of maintenance versus the depreciated book value of the vehicle. So, where those two lines cross, that's when the optimum time is to dispose of it. Because if you fall below that line, then you're putting money into a vehicle that's no longer a valuable asset. So, maybe the next meeting, we can, we can have that graph to, to set your mind at ease.
So, if you do it with all of them, then I won't have to ask and I can have a quick look and then I'll be good.
Exactly.
Thank you very much.
Not weedy at all, your worship.
Thank you so much, I'll be very careful.
Okay. Turn your mic off though so we can proceed.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's quite all right. Councillor McPherson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a quick question, I guess it would be the pickup. Any consideration for a green vehicle? A alternate fuels, a electric, a hybrid, a, to send a message to our community that we are working on reducing our carbon footprint?
Through, Mr. Chairman, to the councillor, I mean, that's, that's a great suggestion. I mean, we do have a last budget, we did buy a hybrid vehicle, so it's, you can plug it in or use it. I know for some of the pickup trucks, it's something we'll definitely look in the industry to see if, if there's, you know, those types of features with pickup trucks.
They're there, they're there, they're out there.
So, it's something that we can take a look at, for sure.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we're moving into project number nine and I've got to find my, ah, thank you. Environment and Safety, Stormwater. So, nine, 10, and 11 are all Heritage Village, Conkle Creek, and Red Maple Storm Sewer. Councillor Burnet.
So, through you, Mr. Chair, to the CAO, I'm wondering, Mike, if you could just indulge us and give us a little bit of history on this Heritage Village Storm Retention Pond. Because my recollection is that at one point, and I don't know if it was exactly last year at this time, that we talked about this project in terms of a million dollars. And I see that the engineering and the consulting, 55,000 is still in here. So, I'm just looking for some clarity as to where we were at one point and how we got here today. And, and if it was, if my recollection was accurate and then it was somewhere around a million dollars, how this dropped 650,000 if we haven't done the consulting? And as a second kind of question, was there some construction activity that took place on-site in 2019?
So, through you, Mr. Chair, I'll start answering the question and Director Graham has the details of how we came up with the cost estimates and what will go into this. Councillor, you're absolutely correct. This was a part of the budget last year. We did remove it from the budget and decided to do some, what I would call, minor works to make sure that the pond functioned and got us an additional year before we looked at a, at a greater expenditure. Since that time, there, there continue to be issues with that particular stormwater management pond. And I see Director Graham eagerly having his hand up, wanting to chime in here. So, I'll let Dave chime in on what we did last year to actually get that additional year out of it. But you're right, councillor, it was in the budget last year. It was removed because we looked at it, we did some analysis and determined we could get another year out of it before we made this expenditure. So, Director Graham.
Through, Mr. Chairman, to the councillor. So, in 2019, what we did through the budget process is we allocated some costs to help us with some design work to figure out what's the best way to rehabilitate this pond. And we also allocated some money in 2019 to look at, could we do any limited maintenance work? So, we did a little bit of brushing work at the storm pond inlets to help promote better flow. But over this year, we've looked at a number of options, you know, how best can we get this pond cleaned out and functioning as intended? So, we have a design now and a plan. So, this, this budget ask that we're asking for is to actually do the construction rehabilitation work of that pond in 2020. And the cost that we're proposing here is reflective of our, a plan that we've developed this year to rehabilitate it.
You're good, okay.
Through, Mr. Chair, our next project is Conkle Creek Remediation, Phase Two Reconstruction. And again, our funding sources are identified there. This is approximately a 1.52 million dollar project. We've got stormwater development charges, Parkland development charges, accounting for over a million dollars of that and the rest being a long-term borrowing debenture of 436,000, getting us to that 1.52 million.
Okay. Oh. Councillor Timmers.
Thank you, Chair Burnet. Through you to our, well, I'll put it through to our CAO. Is this the final stage or is there another stage on this? Or maybe through to Director Graham. How far are we in now? Is this going to be it?
Through, Mr. Chairman, to the councillor, so this is the final phase. We, we did the investment of the first phase in 2018. So, this will be the final phase where we actually maximize that investment and, and put in the multi-use trail.
And then it's complete? Okay, thank you.
And if it helps, Councillor Timmers, through our Active Transportation Committee meeting, a couple of weeks ago, we recommended that this project go forward under the federal infrastructure grant application to try to get the part that we're going to debenture maybe covered, where we would only have to put in 28% of that total. So, due date missing 12th of November, so hopefully we'll hear shortly after that. So, keep our fingers crossed. Councillor Burnet.
Thank you, Chair Patriva. Through you, and, and I don't want to get into the weeds, literally, in the creek. But this is a two-phase project. So, I did have an opportunity to speak with Walter, who's, I think, champion this project earlier today. And we were having a discussion about some sign-offs on Phase, on Phase One. And he talked about the trail and the construction of the trail. So, is the trail work still part of Phase One or is it part of Phase Two?
Through, Mr. Chairman, I'll let Director Graham, I think some preparatory work was part of Phase One, but Dave may have some more information.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to the councillor, the Phase Two component that you're looking at tonight has the, the trail component in it because the trail will be installed all in Phase Two and the trail will go through Phase One. Maybe I'm being confusing on that, but like, so Phase One was built, just the creek works? So, when we do Phase Two, we're doing Phase Two creek works and the entire trail that will go through Phase One.
Okay, so through you, Mr. Chair, it's my understanding that when we did the PIC, there were a number of residents that were very concerned that when the trail would, would cross their property, that a number of those residents were looking for fences. So, as we move forward, any of the fence component of that, is it included in this budget or is that going to be a separate item?
Through, Mr. Chairman, to the councillor, so staff, we've been working with the residents recently, meeting with residents one-on-one who have identified, you know, privacy concerns when there's, for the future multi-use trail. So, we are working with residents to come up with various options, whether it's fencing or strategic plantings and bushes where they have concerns. So, that will be part of this project. Any of those screening measures that we have to do will be included in Phase Two.
So, it's, it's incorporated in the 1.4 million? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our next project, Project 11, is the Red Maple Avenue Storm Sewer Construction. That is a little over $1 million, 1.06 million for that project. 84,800 is funded through the capital levy. 710,200 through development and development charges. And then there is a 25% developer contribution there as well. So, for everyone's background, this is the, this is part of the, or it's being prompted and the funds we're receiving are part of the Phelps Development that's occurring in that Red Maple area near Bridgeport Drive in Queen Victoria, and we are upgrading that to a full urban standard.
Okay, I see no questions there. So, now we move into the next four projects, which are waterworks, so three water main replacements and a pumping station upgrade.
Through, Mr. Chairman, this is definitely the largest area in terms of expenditures that you will see around our water projects, our waterworks projects. The first one is the First Avenue Water Main Replacement. This is a design-only and it is in the amount of $60,000 funded from our Water Main Reserve Fund.
Okay. Councillor Burnet.
So, through, Mr. Chair, to the CAO, I think, I think we've heard from the residents of First Avenue for quite some time that they've been waiting for First Avenue to be reconstructed. I guess I'm glad to see it here. I'm just, I guess I'm just questioning, unless I'm misinterpreting some of the description. So, we're going to do the 60,000 to do the water main replacement design, but then we're not scheduling the rehabilitation until like the next five years? I'm just wondering why we're spending the 60,000 now if we already know rehabilitation's not going to take place for five years? But maybe, maybe I'm misunderstanding the description.
Through, Mr. Chairman, I'll let Director Graham answer that question.
Through, Mr. Chairman, to the councillor, I apologize for the description. That's, that should be revised. The plan is for First Avenue, we want to do the design work next year to, for the water main replacement and that road is in our four-year capital plan to be done in 2021. So, the idea is we want to get the design work done next year in 2020 and then be in a position to rehabilitate the road in 2021.
Excellent. Thank, thank you for that.
Our next project is the Project 13, Freezen Neighborhood Water Main Replacement, Phase One Construction. So, this is a 1.715 million dollar project being funded from our Water Main Reserve Fund.
Mayor Easton.
Mr. Chairman, I'm curious to know how this fits into the context of the development, the fairgrounds development. And, and you, I'm sure, would recall. So, there would be assessments done to determine the capacity, but also the condition? Or maybe it just was a matter of looking at capacity once that was built? And I know it's ductile pipe and it's always an issue until it's completely replaced. But would this normally have been part of the development or the, the developer's responsibility at all in terms of putting that large development in the fairgrounds area?
Director Graham.
Through, Mr. Chairman, to the mayor, this particular project is actually, it's not really connected to the fairgrounds development. It's kind of its own unique neighborhood and it's serviced by its own local water main. So, it's not really, it doesn't really interconnect with the new Lincoln Square development. This particular project, it's a high priority for us. The water main's in a very poor shape and it's been on our plan for, for quite some time to, to get to. And it's basically old ductile iron water main that is deteriorated and we have a lot of breaks out there. So, that, that's really the biggest issue to get this fixed.
Okay, I'm, I'm happy to have this separated and to understand that it's separated and to be prepared if a question comes up. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Through, Mr. Chairman, Project 14 is the Prudems Water Main Upgrade Construction. As I highlighted earlier, this is our largest ask, probably one of the largest asks before council in some time. And so, this is a 7.5 million dollar project. You will see $2 million of that is funded through Water Main Reserve Funds and 5.5 million is being apportioned through long-term borrowing. million is being apportioned through long-term borrowing. And definitely don't need to speak about Prudems or the importance of the Prudems project, but this is an integral part of that, and staff can answer any questions council may have on this project.
And this also ties in that remnant piece on, that goes under the QEW Victoria Avenue that we have looked at doing for a number of years, and sought some external funding, and now we can bundle it together. So it's an excellent news project, and one that needs to go forward in order to trigger that development, so. Okay, oh. Mayor Easton.
Oh, I'm very sorry.
Quite all right. Counselor Brene.
Through you, Mr. Chair, to the CAO. I'm just wondering, obviously, 7.5 million dollars is a large amount. I'm just wondering how we've come up with that number? Is this, staff has put in unit prices per meter of pipe, you know, based on regular construction, or have we gone out to get some estimates? I'm just wondering, I mean, I'm not trying to get into weeds, but I thought I had heard a number a year and a half ago, it was gonna be a $5 million project. I'm just a little surprised to see it's at 7.5.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I know Dave wants to answer that question. I asked that same very question to Director Graham, so.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to the Counselor. We do have a design on this project, so we have a pretty good idea on what it's gonna cost in terms of the specifications and the scope of the project. The Prudems component, if you go to the, on the back of the page, there's a bit of a map there, maybe that might help sort of look at, I can sort of explain. So basically, the Prudems component is around 5.5 million, but we've also included the Victoria Avenue Water Main Crossing under the QEW in that, in this scope of work. So that's why you're seeing the overall project costs in the $7 million range, because it includes that other large project.
Perfect, thanks for the clarity.
Counselor McPherson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a question about the funding plan and the 20-year debenture, and, you know, just thinking that we are looking at DCs coming from that project, you know, certainly well in advance of 20 years, and I'm wondering if we're, if we're looking to pay as we get paid, and pay off that debenture rather than having it sit for 20 years and paying interest for 20 years? Through you, Mr. Chair.
Chair.
So through the chair, at this point during the DC study, only half of the project was identified as being current. Half of it was considered post-period benefit, which means we're not actually collecting DC charges on half of it until halfway, until another 10 years or so. So really, we only are collecting DC charges for half of it. And so we would need to find funding for that half anyways. And then the reason we're doing the entire project, though, is that we will be locked into the interest rate, and right now, the investment interest rate that we would get is about similar and on par. So it's about a wash, whether you, if you were to fund it from reserves, you would lose out on that interest you would be gaining. And if we fund from debt, then we're just paying for it, but we're still earning the interest on it. And if interest rates get better than they are right now, then we'll be earning money on those reserve funds up on top of what we're paying out, because our interest rate will be locked in. So the one thing to note with that long-term borrowing, the costs are a wash, but the actual payments for it, those ones will be funded 73% from DCs, and the other portion from our water reserve. And with the water reserve as well, we'll be getting money from the people who are moving into that area to fund the water reserve as well, so.
Oh, my God.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Maybe if I can try to summarize it, and my expertise is not finance necessarily. However, I think there's a benefit to us using long-term borrowing versus the interest we're gonna receive on the monies that we can put in our own bank. So I think that's why we've chosen to do it.
So my question was not about the debenture. It was not about reserves.
Paying ourselves back soon.
It was about the 20 years. That's my question. And even if we're paid out in 10 years, why aren't we paying off the loan in 10 years? We've got another 10 years of interest that we'd be paying. Sorry that I didn't make it that clear.
Yeah, sorry. Through the chair, we can make it 10 years, then you're just paying twice as much per year. We can shorten it if that's the desire.
So you're saying that once we lock into 20 years, we got no, we got no way out, right, with the bank? They're saying, we can't pay that off in advance. We pay a penalty to do that.
Yes, we need to be locked in.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Counselor Reimer.
Thank you, Chair Pachariva. Just to Director Graham, is the region helping out at all with this, number one, in regards to just costs and also navigating Jordan Harbor?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to the Counselor. There's not really any regional cost sharing in this project. We need to work with the region to connect to Fourth Avenue to their transmission main. But the project is pretty much development charge funded with a small portion of water reserves, so there's no regional funding on it. But we're gonna be working closely with the region in terms of, we're gonna be working on Jordan Road and the North Service Road, so we've been working closely with them in terms of how that construction will unfold on the roads, but they actually aren't paying any money towards this work.
Okay, with, specifically to Jordan Harbor, though, how are we navigating that?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. So the good news is we don't have to replace that section, so we're actually not gonna have to go under the harbor.
Good, that was my question, thank you.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Thank you, Chair Pachariva. Just with regards to the project itself, is it going to be tender, how's it going to be tendered out? Is it going to be tendered out all in one? Is it gonna be pieced out? Is it gonna be offered in phases, or what's, how's that, how's the tender process you see?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to the Counselor. At this point, our plan would be we do one large tender. We also have to have, you know, certain criteria in our tender, because these contractors are gonna be working in the MTO corridors. So there's certain requirements that we have to have with our tender for contractors to work. You know, they're gonna have to bore under the QEW and work within those corridors, so we want one contractor doing this work.
Okay, and then, if I may, one more question. Given a unique geographic area that you'll be working with in that part of town, is the contingency fund of 275, do you think that's going to be enough? Or is there, is that a, how do you come up with a contingency? What's the formula? How do you come up with that sort of a number on a scale of a project this size?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, that's a good question. You know, contingencies, we look at the risks of the project and look at, you know, what we don't know. We've done a lot of work on this project in terms of the design work. We've done a lot of geotechnical work, so at this point in time, we think the risks are lower in terms of not having such a large contingency. And so this is kind of what we're proposing, based on the design work that we've done to date and all the geotechnical work.
Okay, so there is no set formula, it's just an estimate that you feel in your professional opinion? Okay, thank you.
Vice Chair Russell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a clarification, I just wanna, I think I misheard something, I just wanna verify. Was it said that the DC charges from this would not be, they would be deferred for 10 years? Is that what I heard correctly, or no?
So through the chair, they're not gonna be deferred? What's in the current DC study is for the period of, that this DC study spans, and there's gonna be more development after the period that this DC study spans, and it will be the responsibility of the developers at that time to be paying for a portion of the project. But for the current portion, that's included in the development charges that will come in and then be paid towards this.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, if I could move on to the next project, Project 15, the Hickson Street Pumping Station. This is a approximately 1.098, $900,000. It is completely funded through development charges with a small portion of about $40,000 coming from our Water Main Reserve Fund. You'll see further down, talking about, there's still no benefit to existing developments as a result of this project, so it will be 100% funded from development charges.
Okay, now we come into 16, 17, 18, Fire Services.
Project number 16, through you, Mr. Chair, to council, is fire equipment. So this includes our bunker gear, some of our hydraulic rescue tools, as well as hose and small equipment replacement. It is a $220,000 capital expenditure. We've got $65,000 coming from the capital levy, and then the equipment replacement reserve funding the balance to the tune of $155,000.
Okay, number 17.
Our next Ask Project 17 is the Fire Safety Trailer. This is $180,000 capital ask. It is, and it will be funded through development charges in the amount of $90,000, covering half, and then the remaining half will be through corporate sponsorship. So Chief Hudson may be able to speak to that, should council have any questions related to that piece, but a good news story from the perspective of getting corporate sponsorships to cover half.
Yes, my board is lighting up here like a Christmas tree, so. Mayor Easton.
Mr. Chairman, is this brand-new, or do we have a fire safety trailer at the present time?
Chief.
Through you, Mr. Chair, this is a brand-new item, and that's one of the reasons why it's eligible for DC funding. It's in addition to our fire safety program, to account for growth in the community.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I really don't wanna get in the weeds, but I don't know what this is, I don't know what it looks like. If there's a way for us to have video or something that describes the use of it, that would all be very helpful.
Okay.
Through you, Mr. Chair, absolutely, we can, you know, provide some additional visuals.
Okay, great. Counselor McLaughlin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just curious about this trailer. I've never seen one of these things before. Can you tell me what the nearest municipality would be that would have some, a trailer such as this?
Through you, Mr. Chair, in the Niagara region, Fort Erie has one, and a number, I believe Hamilton has one, and Holman County has one as well. They're slightly older. This particular trailer has an emergency preparedness component that the others don't, that's a fairly new development. And this is really an initiative that was, well, number one, it's growth-related, but the firefighters have taken it upon themselves to initiate the corporate sponsorship, and, you know, it's kind of a good news story.
Okay, and further to that, if they had, if they somehow failed to make that $90,000, the project's terminated?
Correct.
Thank you.
Counselor McPherson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you to the chief. So, you know, it sounds like an excellent piece of equipment for us to certainly teach our residents and, you know, businesses about fire safety. So the question I would have is, would this fit into our emergency management agreement? And that being the case, would we potentially get a cost share with Grimsby? I would think there would be some efficiencies, you know, to share the trailer, and, you know, if we could tie West Lincoln into it, you know, maybe there's a further opportunity to take that 90 grand and split it three ways.
Through you, Mr. Chair, this does actually present the opportunity for a revenue stream. There are a number of municipalities that would be interested in renting. In fact, we actually did rent Fort Erie's, I believe it was last year, but theirs is getting a little long in the tooth. So to your point regarding some of the partnering agencies, that's certainly a possibility we're looking at to recover some of the costs, certainly the operating costs that would be associated, but some of the capital costs as well, we would be looking to recoup.
That would be good.
Counselor Brene.
Thank you, Chair. I think most of my questions are answered. When I chimed in, my question was going to be, how many other municipalities in Niagara? How many of the 11 have it? But I'm understanding that it's one, Fort Erie. And my other question was gonna be, is there an opportunity to share this with Grimsby? So thank you very much.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, if I can continue.
Please.
Project number 18 is our Fire Fleet Replacement. This includes the replacement of our 93 pumper rescue truck, and that is $745,000. And number two is our 1998 rehab water rescue truck replacement, and we see an amount there of $385,000, totaling 1.13 million. And 1.1 of that is long-term borrowing, and then you see some salvage and disposal of old apparatus.
Okay, Counselor McLaughlin.
Thank you, Chair Brene. I believe this is same truck from last year that we were looking.
We look nothing alike, Counsel, but go ahead.
What's that? Sorry?
It's okay.
So I'm just curious, this year, there's these significant costs in maintenance with regards to this truck, and last year, there was none, or there was no concerns with regards to that. And I don't know how often this truck is actually used to justify this sort of an expenditure. And the other thing I note when, with looking at this truck, is that we're replacing a truck that's five years older, and how, how does that happen? How does, like, how does one truck, you know, last five years longer, especially given that cost?
Through you, Mr. Chair, to the Counselor's question, I can certainly get some of the details on the usage and some of the maintenance costs, we can provide to that. And in terms of the replacement of the vehicles, it really depends, there are two very different pieces of equipment. And just through fleet management and actual operational needs, that's just, you know, where it came from, so.
Okay, if I may, again, I'm gonna ask, how many other, how many other trucks like this are in the area?
There's at least three others that I'm aware of, but having realized, you must realize that some of the other departments run very much differently. We're looking at some operational differences, you know, is it a full-time department versus a part-time or a volunteer? This particular truck is staffed by total volunteers. They don't get a dime for their services, but they provide a very valuable service. This particular truck was called to the St. Catherine's Fire. They don't have one, the big Pioneer Greenhouse Fire that they had this past summer, to assist with that. It was there for, and I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, but better than a day, providing, you know, essential health and safety services. And, you know, that was a cost recovery situation there, so. It is, it's an operational need. The operating costs are, as I say, minimal in terms of staffing it, and with the new health and safety regulations onboard, and especially with the decontamination issues that are prevalent in this day and age. And with the new health and safety regulations onboard and especially with the decontamination issues that are prevalent in this day and age, it's certainly a, a very necessary thing from our operational perspective. The other thing I should mention too, that I didn't really emphasize last year, but was still the case. This unit is actually used as first-run response to water and ice rescue calls anywhere in the municipality. Because, you know, when you're donning the specialized water and rescue ice suits and taking them off in the middle of winter, this affords the ability of, for the firefighters to get in and, you know, take the suits off and warm up again after they've been in the icy water. So from that perspective, it is a response vehicle. And having a response vehicle that's a nineteen ninety-eight model, it gets to be a little bit problematic from a reliability standpoint. So that's one of the other reasons why we're looking to replace it.
If I can, one more question. This is, this is, this is an operational need, yet St. Catherine's doesn't have one.
If I may, St. Catherine's works on a very different model. They have full-time firefighters. Their pumper trucks are designed differently to accommodate their decontamination needs. So it's really not comparing apples to apples when you compare St. Catherine's with us. You know, our volunteer firefighters go to a call, they need to be decontaminated. And quite often, they simply go back to work or homes, which is not the case in St. Catherine's where they're still on shift. They go back to the station, they just have to, you know, work the remainder of their shift and they have decon procedures there. So this is a little bit of a different situation. But from, you know, volunteer, we're trying to preserve a volunteer fire response model. And this is one way of doing it is providing for the, the health and safety for the members.
So Wes, Wes Lincoln would have a truck like this?
No, Wes Lincoln does not have one.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Easton?
Mr. Chairman, I'm, I just want to make sure that I'm asking a new question. I think it's, it's really the call volume, I think, that I want to see with this one. I understand about the decontamination. Again, you know, we do need more information on the repairs, but I really want to see the call volume on this particular one.
Okay. Good question.
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair, yes, we can certainly provide some more details on call volumes, the number of times it was deployed and some of the repair costs.
Okay, excellent. You worship your microphone again. Quite all right. Counselor Reimer?
Thank you, Chair Patrieva, through to the chief. Just something sort of along the lines of Counselor McLaughlin, just in the description, Chief Hudson. The description, which exceeds municipal fire insurance grading requirements. Is that strictly on the years of service or is it, is like, is there other factors in there too? Just for, kind of in general, not, not so much related to that, but just in general?
Essentially, fire insurance grading, this is the, what the fire insurance underwriters use to determine fire insurance grades for the entire municipality. Any first-line apparatus is a maximum age of fifteen years. So any of our frontline pumblers can't be any older than fifteen years. They can be downgraded to a second run or, you know, standby. And that's what we attempt to do is we try to recycle our fleet to maximize the life of the fleet. When we look at a rescue truck that would be considered a second line, so twenty years is about the maximum for a second-run response vehicle. And beyond that, you start putting the insurance rating for the whole municipality at risk if your fleet exceeds the acceptable ages.
All right, yeah, thank you.
Okay, Counselor Brene?
Thank you, Chair Patrieva, through to Chief Hudson. So on those same lines, I, I'm, I guess I'm probably asking a question that's already been answered, but I'm still having a hard time to understand the risk. So, so a first-run apparatus cannot exceed fifteen years. A second-run app, apparatus cannot exceed twenty. But both of these units are past that, twenty-one and twenty-six. So both these units are second-run apparatus?
That's correct. The, through fleet management, the oldest pumper is, actually should have been replaced a couple of years ago. It's actually in a reserve status now. So the plan is to put the new truck in Jordan and do some fleet management. Take the Jordan truck, put it to second-run truck to get a few more years out of it. And then taking the oldest truck in the fleet, which is a, a reserve truck in case there's a breakdown or a major fire, and dispose of that at auction.
Thank you very much.
Vice Chair Russell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you to the chief. I know we have a formal agreement with some municipalities to provide services in terms of rescue. And a handshake gentleman's agreement with others that opted out of that agreement, but we will still provide services at a cost-recovery basis. Is that correct?
In terms of fire protection, though, that we all have written agreements. We have signed and executed automatic aid agreements with both Grimsby and Wes Lincoln. And those are in place and fully active. As well, we're part of a mutual aid program from the Niagara regions and that's, again, fully active.
Okay, that's all I can remember the name of it. So going back to Counselor McPherson's point on project fifteen, I believe, is there any appetite or opportunity to potentially share the costs with some of our nearest municipal partners to make sure, or to see if some of this cost can be recovered through them directly? If we are going to be sharing equipment and, again, it would remove the requirement for them to have anything of this like?
Through you, Mr. Chair, we're always looking for op, ways we can do things better from a business perspective. You know, we're in contact with our neighboring departments all the time. You know, I look back at our bunker gear replacement as an example of that. For past number of years, we've partnered with other departments to save money on a joint purchase. This would be no different. Once it comes time to actually purchase the vehicle, we would certainly be reaching out to Grimsby and others to see if they wanted to partner. I'm not sure, and I'd have to talk to our finance department, how that would play into effect with our DC charges from Lincoln. But certainly, you know, if the firefighters have garnered corporate sponsorships for one half and then the DC for the other half, we'd have to see.
Yeah. Again, I'm thinking more of just this one, like, because of the, the lion's share of it is going to long-term borrowing, would there be any opportunity to maybe offset some of that cost through the partnership?
Through you, yes, so the rehab water rescue truck, yes, we would certainly be approaching Grimsby because they are probably our closest neighbor. And we would certainly be approaching, and in fact, I have approached them on a very preliminary level to, to discuss exactly that, so.
Is it possible to get, again, we're, we're time-sensitive now, but to get some firm commitment or at least an MOU of maybe where they might be headed or if they're, are willing, just to see if we can bring that number down to a reasonable level?
Again, through you, Mr. Chair, I think the timing is, you know, this is preliminary budget approval. And I think when it comes time to actually make the purchase, we can certainly look at that. And, you know, nothing says we have to spend the whole three hundred and eighty-five thousand. But if, if there's a way to reduce the, the long-term borrowing, we would certainly look at that, so.
Mayor Easton? Knowing you've asked two questions?
I'm sorry?
It's okay, I'm just looking at the clerk, looking at the clock, knowing you've, you know, I'm gonna kind of try to rein this in so we get through all this and, and...
Okay, I want to ask, I just want to suggest that this is probably the right time for an entire fleet evaluation in Niagara West. I, I just want to take this another step further, put that on the table because it's about the right equipment. It's based on demand, but when the chief describes that cascading process, you know, you can see how capacity could be created at the very least. Is it time to start that?
Excellent question. Well, before I, yeah, before I go, knowing you've asked for something different?
Okay, I'm gonna, this will be a different question. Is, is this a purchase that Minister Clark is looking at municipalities and possibly cost shaving, saving? Is this the type of efficiency that we are?
Well, that's what the mayor asked. That's, so the mayor asked for that review on, is this a service that we can share?
Okay. And, and should we defer this purchase until then? Is that, is that, could that be considered?
Well, then, we're not, we're not, we're not doing that tonight. We're just, we're going, we're gonna get there, yes. Mr. Kraplis?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, if I could make a comment. I, I think the, the mayor's notion and idea of talking to the other municipalities and looking at that shared services model is a good one. We're having those conversations already. I think there are changes that, you know, may be coming down the pipe. I think what Minister Clark and the notion of savings and efficiencies speaks to is not necessarily vehicle purchases, but rather is there a way to share our resources, to look at deployment, to look at some of those back-of-house functions that take place? And so I think that, that work with the CAOs is starting to happen, it's gonna continue to happen. And we can definitely report back moving forward on that.
Okay, great. Okay, so cemetery, Vineland columbarium.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, project nineteen, this is the Vineland columbarium, seventy-one thousand. And a very good news piece here in terms of, this will be an internal loan that we're gonna use to fund this and future revenues. We've got a picture on the back which lays out what a columbarium is. And if there's any questions, we can provide more information.
Mayor Easton?
Mr. Chairman, just quickly, I'd like a note made so that the cemetery fees are taken into consideration when the operating budget comes forward. And if necessary, Mr. Chairman, for us to have a speaker on this who can, along with our own staff, who can bring some realism, I think, to those fees.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, noted.
Okay, facilities?
Our next project, project twenty, is the Fleming Library Shade Structure. This is seventy-three thousand dollars that we've highlighted here. There's a picture on the back and of course Julie's here to answer any questions. And this will be funded through our capital levy.
Counselor McPherson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, just a question whether this is a year-round shade structure or is this a summer or a three-season shade structure? Does this come down in the winter?
So through you, Mr. Chair, I think Ms. McKay?
Ms. McKay, yeah.
Through you, Mr. Chair, there, there are various types. Certainly the longevity of those sales is improved if we take them down. It's just work to do that.
So we, we would, we would be taking this down?
We probably should, yes.
Any room for one of these at RF or MF?
The Moses F. Rittenhouse Library, right?
The Rittenhouse Library. Any, any room for one of those, these there?
Through you, Mr. Chair, I believe there are big plans for that space that may take up some, some room.
I like it, I like it, it looks fabulous.
Yes.
I think that's the first thing we'll hear is, hey, what about us? So Rittenhouse, here we come.
And again, Counselor McPherson, from our library board meeting the other night in the federal infrastructure grant, looking at some modifications to the Moses F. Rittenhouse branch. So including that, maybe in that going forward, let's see how it works out. So point noted. Hickson Street?
The next project, project twenty-one, is our Hickson Street Parking Lot repaving and line painting. This is something that council heard about as part of our parking strategy some time ago. And this is included here. This is a ninety-three thousand dollar project funded partially from cash-in-lieu of Parking Reserve Fund of forty thousand and the other fifty-three from the capital levy.
Okay, I've got a question with respect to this project and not sure who it's directed to. I'll direct it to you, Mr. Kraplis. There's a, there was, there's an easement that runs from Mountain Street to the Hickson Street Parking Lot. We used to pay the owner of that property. We stopped this, it would give access to the property from both sides. Sometimes there's vehicles parking in this laneway and other times there's not. So wondering if we're going to make the investment in the parking lot if we could examine this at the same time to make it fully functional?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, absolutely. I think it's important and critical that before we move forward, we clarify that particular piece.
Thank you. Okay, so parks, twenty-two to thirty-one, Charles Daly?
Yes, a eighty-seven thousand five hundred expenditure here funded from the capital levy. You'll see on your capital budget sheet the various elements, expansion of the West Beach parking improvement and some accessibility and drop-off areas, painting of the Banshow Pavilion, some shed roof replacement and accessible stairs and hill access.
Okay. I see nothing there. Actually, just following on Counselor Brene's line, this is the third roof we're looking at. So any thoughts of bundling those three together and throwing them out at the same time? Yes, I see heads nodding, okay, great.
Absolutely, I think.
Okay, terrific. Mayor Easton?
Mr. Chairman, just want to note that, just to make sure that it gets into the operating. There's issues of dumping here, there's issues of aesthetics. I think it's great to get these, you know, to get all of this spiffed up, no question about it. But there's also some additional activities going on there that aren't so nice. And somehow we need to make sure that they don't continue on. Thank you.
Counselor McPherson?
Mr. Chair, I need to apologize for missing a, a question with regards to Hickson Parking Lot and that, if I may?
You may.
Okay, thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair, so, so much discussion about the parking lot behind Convo's and behind the Olympia and whatnot, certainly at the BIA and, and some anticipation that that was going to be done in 2020. Through you to the CAO, is that, is that?
Through you, Mr. Chair, that is definitely the plan. I know we are working with Ms. Hicks, Mr. Denny's been involved in those conversations, Director Graham as well. So we have had conversations in terms of what that would look like. I think we need to look at the, the potential costs and how we add that potentially to some of our existing contracts in terms of what we would look for in 2020 to do that actual paving. I know Ms. Hicks has had conversations with all the respective property owners and I think in principle gotten their approval to move forward. I know we've provided some assistance from Director Graham's area in terms of quotes and what that would look like. And so what would that cost-sharing arrangement potentially be? Is it all on the town? And, and so those are things that we'll bring back to you, I think, once we get the, the final confirmation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Counselor McLaughlin?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. With regards to the little, that structure, that eleven hundred square feet, twelve hundred square, square feet structure that we're planning on putting a roof on, the expected life, is that of the roof or is that of the building?
Through you, Mr. Chair, I'll let Shannon answer that question.
Through you, Mr. Chair, that's of the roof.
Okay, and then?
And the pictures to the right show you what the roof looks like now.
Yeah, I, I don't see a picture of the building itself. Can, can you, can you explain to me the condition of the building itself? Is it large enough? Are we gonna be looking at possibly having to expand the size of that building?
It's a building, through you, Mr. Chair, it's a building that is used for community services staff for equipment and materials. It is a, it's at the top of the park up on the hill.
Okay, and?
The building is, is in decent shape, but it's the roof that's in rough shape.
So five years from now, we're not gonna be asking for a new building?
Not for its current purpose.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Through you, Mr. Chair, moving on to project twenty-three, the Basket Paul Court resurfacing that we are proposing on doing. Three locations, St. Vladimir, Rittenhouse and Jack Simpson. And that is a fifty thousand, seven thousand dollar capital expenditure funded from the capital levy.
Okay, and if I may ask a question on this? I mean, it came up at our ward meetings about maybe getting a, or, or looking for information to come back next time. This looks to be just a replacement of the asphalt. If we could get a price on rubberized multipurpose court? court surfacing for these three.
Through you, Chair. Yes, we can. It's an approximation. It's about four times the price.
And what's the, and then going along with that, the lifecycle cost of that, how much longer do you get out of it, so?
Moving on to project twenty-four, the Beamsville Lions Park Investment in terms of twenty-five trees, two benches, and four sets of player benches. That is a fifty thousand dollar expenditure funded through the capital levy.
Okay.
Project twenty-five, oh, sorry.
Mayor Easton.
Mr. Chairman, I need some clarity on the MOU. The MOU is always for capital. Is that correct, through you, Mr. Chair?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. To the mayor, that is my understanding.
And, and it's established through a meeting with the Lions Club, and they bring a list. Is that correct?
I'll let Ms. McKay kind of get into the details. She's the one having the meetings with her team, but more or less, we do have regular meetings with the Beamsville Lions Club in terms of highlighting the needs in that particular location, as well as our own identified needs in that location.
But, Mr. Chairman, that's what I'm trying to separate out. You know, do we, we're committed to fifty thousand dollars every year, and we spend fifty thousand dollars every year. This is, I'm trying to separate that out from...
Through you, Mr. Chair. Maybe to speak a little bit to the MOU, there is a historic MOU that speaks to the partnership between the Beamsville Lions, the history, the legacy, the support that they've given to the municipality. It does highlight in there that their hope would be that we would make fifty thousand dollars a year in investments to that particular park. Some budget years, last year was a good example, we weren't able to do that. There is always competing priorities. I think we always work with them to prioritize. Is it trees? Is it shade structures? Is it other sort of elements that they need? So I think we do our best to meet the needs that they have and look at our own needs in that particular location. So this year, you do see that fifty thousand dollars being earmarked for the particular park, and other years, we've had similar expenditures. But it is a, I mean, it's a very iterative conversation that we have with the Lions and our own staff in terms of that particular investment that we make, but I know Shannon may have some more thoughts.
Through you, Mr. Chair, to the mayor. That is correct. Everything that Mr. Kukopoulos has stated here. And the reason that the four sets of player bench covers or the eight sets of bleachers is listed as such is because the ask has come from the Lions but not the user group. So we'd like to be able to work with the user group and determine what is the higher priority, the player bench covers or the eight set of bleachers, which we know are needed in that park. So we would be reaching out to the user group to engage them in those discussions as well, but this was the, this was the ask of the Lions, and we do meet with them regularly to, to see what, what they're looking to have done in that space.
Okay, so we should also understand that there are operating costs that the town contributes to this park, and that's all, and that's also part of the MOU. Is that correct?
Through you, Mr. Chair. There are definitely costs from an operating perspective that the town contributes, whether that be line painting, grass cutting, all those other things. That's not subject to the MOU, but those are addition, I would say, the value-added pieces in the relationship, in the partnership that are there, but those are not part of the MOU.
Okay, thank you very much. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Council Brene.
Thank you, Chair Patriva, to the Director of Community Services. I'm just looking for some clarification. When I look at this project, I, I, I'm seeing that this is kind of a continuation of what we've started with the Lions. I remember being up there when the Memorial, Memorial Forest was, was dedicated, but I guess I'm just looking for some clarification because we had a number of trees up at Lions Park in the, specifically in the parking lot area that had died and were identified from the ash bore. It's my understanding that about half of those trees were removed, but I know I was up there late summer, and there was still some forty-odd trees that were still, that were dead but hadn't been cut down. I was led to believe those trees were going to be cut down late this fall as, as to not interrupt with any activities that were taking place. So I'm just trying to make sure that I understand that these twenty-five trees are separate from the trees that are being cut down in the parking lot.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Yes, that is correct.
And will those twenty-five trees, where they, where they are in the parking lot, will be, will there be new trees planted there?
They should be on the list for the fall planting. Yes, I can double-check that and get back to you.
Perfect. Thank you.
Moving on to project twenty-five, this is the Town Pole Banner Hardware. There is a Main Street grant of twenty-five thousand and a levy-supported portion of thirty-five thousand totaling sixty thousand dollars. And we highlight, I think, a lot of the benefits in terms of our Christmas displays, consistent hardware to allow that interchange that occurs between different seasons, and of course, as we head into Lincoln's fiftieth next year, and our desire to, I think, promote that and hang things on these banners, as well as the twenty-twenty-one games and what will be supplied to us through those. And so staff can definitely speak to that, should council have any questions.
Okay, number twenty-six.
So number twenty-six is some additional Beamsville Lions Park upgrades that speak to, council will recall, we were awarded the two thousand and twenty softball championships or some of the events as part of those. And so these are some identified upgrades that we're seeking to look at as it relates to this particular park and the upgrades. So you'll see a seventy-five thousand dollar ask that we're making as part of the capital levy. We've also included other elements that have been deferred. We've done this project a little bit different because we wanted, I think, show council all the needs in that particular area, but knowing, again, the capital budget, the challenges that we often face with capital budgets and bringing it forward, we are recommending some incremental work here.
If I may, a question to Ms. McKay. So in the Parks and Recreation and Culture Master Plan, it called for a reorientation of this facility. So wondering if that is not a better task to undertake and then proceed with this? Now, I know you're under a timeline with the softball thing, but can any of that take place in, in, in lockstep with these, knowing we need to get there and to increase the functionality of it?
Through you, Mr. Chair. The reorientation would be much more costly, and at this point, we just need to get this ready because the championships are actually next year. They're in advance, so we're still seeking information back from the game staff to see if there'll be any funding forthcoming, but that hasn't been confirmed. So these are really incremental changes that we, we'd need to do for ourselves as well, to make the fields, restore the fields, and, and we need new bleachers, and it's not...
Yeah, no, I get that, but I mean, like, we're going to spend, we're going to spend twenty-five thousand dollars on restoring the field, but then, in essence, the infield becomes the outfield, and the outfield becomes the infield in a couple of years. So to me, if you need to flip it, I would flip it in, in coordination with this, with this upgrade, so it's done. As part of, as part of the master plan, right?
Through you, Mr. Chair. It's more of a, an operational maintenance upgrade.
Okay, okay.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Project twenty-seven is the, what we're titling here, the Park Asset Management Repairs and Replacement. So this includes a number of things that are general in nature around many of our parks, from picnic tables to garbage cans, a number of pathway repairs that need to happen, both from a health and safety perspective and an accessibility perspective, some sign replacements, and that is a ninety-five thousand dollar expenditure. Project, moving forward, project twenty-eight is the leash-free park and the permanency and creation of that leash-free park. That is a sixty thousand dollar expenditure.
Vice Chair Russell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Quick question. Will we be able to get a rendering of what the final version will be before it gets implemented? Just for feedback.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Absolutely, we can provide that.
Okay. Council Timbers.
Thank you, Chair. Through to Ms. McKay. Regarding the rental, the, what's there now, I'm just curious what the cost is for the rental.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I believe it's around ten thousand dollars for the, for the rental.
For how, for how long?
I think eight to ten months. I'd have to double-check the numbers.
Okay, I guess I'm, I'm just wondering, you know, making the investment of a permanent, we, do we have a number of, like, how, how well-used it is, or I don't know how we would track that. So I just wanted to weigh out the rental compared to the cost of a permanent. You know, I'm totally support the dog park. I'm just curious about that.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Yes, we, we have been collecting information from users. We have a feedback form online on our website that talks about the dog park and collects information. Most of that, I would say over ninety-nine percent, is very, very positive, but we will also have to see how things go through the winter. I mean, the, the, it is much safer to have permanent fencing installed, much safer to have the permanent gates installed, so we will have to monitor that as, as it goes.
Okay, thank you.
Council Brene.
Thank you, Chair Patriva. I'm just going to put this out there that only because in my previous life, I used to rent this construction fence. We didn't sell it, but we rented it. But here in, here in Lincoln, in Beamsville, one of the largest producers and manufacturers of construction fence is right here in Beamsville, and I love the idea that we've gone to some of our community partners to help us and assist us with things like poop bags. And I'm, I'm really thinking that if we were to approach All Cover and ask them if they would like to be a community sponsor of this fence, that I think they might embrace that. I'm just putting it out there.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Great idea. Project twenty-nine, the Tullman Drive Easement Restoration. This is a twenty-five thousand dollar line item funded through the capital levy. Moving forward, project thirty, Rotary Park, formerly known as Serena Park Development. This is a project totaling three point zero six million dollars funded, as you see below, through our Parkland Development Charges to the tune of two point seven five four million dollars, and then our recreational land reserve fund as per the Planning Act of three hundred and six thousand dollars. You do see below you a breakout of the various pieces that make up that three million dollar project ask. And again, there is a rendering. This attached to concept that was presented at previous meetings, and that was informed by community consultation, and staff can answer any questions council may have.
Mayor Easton.
Mr. Chairman, yesterday I had the opportunity to meet with one of the principals at the Jacob that Dr. Emche is building, and I know that this young lady also had a merit, a meeting with Sarah Aine, and I'm not too sure who else attended. However, I just thought that it was worth noting that the, this park, as well as the Fleming Center, as well as the Conkle Creek, as an entire montage, if you will, of activity is something that they believe is already brought tremendous value to the marketing that they're doing on the sales for the new building. So I just thought it would be worth noting that. Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I'd also be remiss if I didn't highlight, and it does include it in your package, the funding from the Rotary.
Council McPherson.
Mr. Chair, and just a question, a couple of questions. One is, so there is six hundred grand that was approved in the twenty-nineteen budget that is not listed here. So, so fair to say that the total cost of the park is three point six million?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I think the best way to answer that question is simply yes. The Skateboard Park, which was a separate budget line item over the years, I recall it was one of the first things that were deliberated at the capital budget. We didn't know at that particular point in time where it would be located, but yes, you're correct, counselor, in terms of that math.
And, and question about the contingency. So maybe you could help us understand contingency as it applies to budgeting for a park. So I'm thinking contingency in a, in a, you know, a water main project or something, you know, the unknowns, you know, something comes up. So we've got a quarter million dollars that, you know, is sitting there. For what reason?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I mean, this is a conversation that actually Chair Patriva, Ms. McKay and I had earlier today relative to contingencies and projects, and I think consistently where you find contingencies in that ten to fifteen percent range, but depending on the type of project, it can be less. So I will let Shannon take you through the same conversation we had, and then we can speak specifically to this, this particular line item and the two hundred and fifty thousand.
So through you, Mr. Chair. Because we haven't done the detailed design yet, and we still have to complete Geotech, and we still have to look at drainage and grading and, and the, the west side of the park where the naturalization garden is going and the butterfly garden is going, we don't, we need that contingency because there are still a lot of unknowns because we're not at the detailed design. We're at the concept design stage. So based on other parks and based on this being an over three million dollar, a three point seven million dollar project, we feel that is, that is safe and fair. If we don't need it, we won't spend it. It is a contingency for something that is unknown or comes up related to what we've already included in the scope of work for the park.
So I guess that, that's a reasonable answer to the question. I guess then it becomes a decision, you know, of the council is, you know, is, is this a, a three point five million dollar park with a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar contingency, or is it a three, you know, three point two five million dollar park, and we'll figure out the contingency as we go? And that may or may not allow us to put everything that we've got into this park in because of, you know, cost differences as we go along. So, so it is a slush fund in, in many ways, that there's just a, a amount of money that's sitting out there that, you know, just in case, you know, we're going to need it. So, you know, I think that this council's got to look at, you know, what is the spend that we want for, for Rotary Park? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I mean, definitely a, a consideration and an option that we can make. So should, should council decide to approve in this particular case a approximately a two point seven five million dollar park and remove that contingency, then we will work with that number, of course.
Yeah, or if the, or if the contingency isn't used, it can be used for the rubberized basketball court, so.
Through you, Mr. Chair.
Keeping it's coming from the parks, DC study and the recreational land planning, and those are parks and facilities, so.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I mean, I, I think the one comment that I would want to make, and I know Shannon did make it, is that should that not be spent, it does return back to its existing reserve fund allocations as, as highlighted, but...
Exactly.
Absolutely noted.
And we've kept that, and, and, you know, you, you highlighted earlier that the base budget funding has only increased, I think, sixty-three thousand dollars. So we want to keep at that level. We don't want to fall behind, so let's reallocate the asset if we can. Continue on, sir.
And this takes us to project thirty-one, the Jordan Hollow Park Enhancements, and you see an eighty-three thousand dollar fund here, or an eighty-three thousand dollar ask funded through our recreational land reserve fund, and some highlights below of how that eighty-three thousand dollar will, will be apportioned to include some site preparation, play structures, as well as some interpretive plaques and some other things. I know... I know our community services team is working on for this particular location.
Mr. Chairman, I think this is, there's certainly nothing wrong with the plan. We are working in a very contained space up on the museum property. I suggested that when I was going through this, that possibly this might be an area to have a plaque for indigenous interpretation. And so I just, my question really is, how can we not lose sight of the fact that this could be one of the options while still looking at some of the other needs with the high barn, with the Conestoga wag and that sort of thing, given that vintage piece that's down there? How can we have that discussion so that at the end of it all, we're satisfied we've taken everything into account?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I mean, I've definitely got some thoughts, but I know Shannon's eager to jump in.
Through you, Mr. Chair, I think they're all great ideas, Mayor Easton. We did have a bit of an email thread conversation back and forth on them. I think sitting down and doing a real visioning exercise, this is an ask, we know what we can do with this, but sitting down to really come up with a concept that then we can use that to ultimately go out and procure the elements that we need for that space are important. And we can engage community stakeholders as well in that process.
Okay, if that's the case, if that's the case, Mr. Chairman, then what's the process for that? Do we need to put this one on hold until we have that more fulsome discussion? I don't think I was, I don't think I knew what those opportunities were.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I mean, I think the other comment I would add to what Shannon has said is specifically in this particular location, I think anytime we can pay homage and I think respect our history, our cultural heritage, this particular location, that's absolutely what we want to do. So I would recommend, I think it's still an important project to move forward with. I think one of the caveats needs to be, that there needs to be, like we've done with other projects, that public engagement, knowing we've probably got an upset budget in terms of the $83,000 we've put here. But again, if we need to come back to council and amend that potentially mid-year, once we have that consultation, we can do that.
Okay, so I just want to reinforce, Mr. Chairman, that the indigenous piece, I think that's really important, but I'm really looking to have a discussion as well about some of those other pieces, if only to get them positioned where they belong. And they're not just, there's a few things hanging fire. I don't, I'm not necessarily saying they're attached to this, but to have that discussion with a larger group would, I think it would be beneficial, and then we can start to put those pieces together.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, absolutely, I think we see that connection definitely in terms of that particular location, and it's.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I like the idea of having a park down in the Jordan Hollow. I just, it's going to be a drive-to park. There's no other real access other than driving to that park. And what I like about that area is that it's a staging area or it's a destination area. There's a trail that runs behind that through up and around. And is there a way where we can try to make this more accessible, let's say from the Jordan Museum? Should a family be at the Jordan Museum, they walk down those stairs, go along that trail, go to the park, and access it that way rather than having to drive to this park?
Through you, Mr. Chair, that current part of the trail is very inaccessible and would take quite some investment. Actually, the Associate Director of Planning, myself, and a member from, actually two members from Ontario Heritage Trust walked that trail some time ago, and that's why it's actually closed off at the base of the museum. So that is a project that we could potentially explore longer term with Ontario Heritage Trust. Those are Ontario Heritage Trust lands back there, and they have requested that that area be closed off because it is unsafe. And in fact, where you used to enter the trail from the Jordan Hollow is actually almost grown over. You almost can't tell where you could enter the trail anymore because they do not want people walking on that portion of the trail right now. So it is a longer-term vision that both we, the municipality, and Ontario Heritage Trust, but it will take planning, it will take design, and it will take investment.
And I appreciate that. It's just, we're promoting active lifestyle, we're promoting the trail system, we're promoting, I think it's a beautiful trail. I actually did walk it two weeks ago. I know it was closed, but I somehow found a way to walk it. And I think there's potential there. I just, you know, I hope to see it happen one day. That's my thing. Thank you.
Counselor McPherson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I would absolutely agree that this is a difficult park to get to for pedestrians. And appreciate the investment, don't want to walk away from the investment, but I question the playground that, you know, we heard last night at the Ward meeting how unsafe that hollow is to navigate with a bike or a walking or, and it really, it really, I think, is a park, a destination for either you're driving there or you're walking the trail from Balls Falls and you're arriving there. So how many kids are going to get there, I think, is the question? I think I'd rather see something that fits more with who's going to use the park. You know, is there a pavilion or something that we put in that park as opposed to a playground? I'd love to have a playground in a Vineland or Jordan Park where it's going to get used, but I don't think that's the right thing to do, knowing what that park is today. So just some comment from, you know, living in the area and knowing the difficulties that we've got with that Jordan Hollow, and by the sounds of it, it's not going to change much over the next 10 to 15 years. So, you know, can we take the monies that we're going to spend on that playground and look at a structure of some kind that would facilitate, you know, trail walkers and, you know, want to, it happens to be raining, they got a cover, you know, they got something, so just a thought. Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Chair, absolutely, Counselor, we can, if counsel agrees to keep this in, then we can undertake the more formal public engagement, the visioning exercise, and determine how best this investment is spent.
Okay, we're in the home stretch, Transportation Roadways, project 32.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, we have project 32, 21st Street Bailey Bridge Maintenance and Repairs. That is an 80, oh, sorry, that is a $65,000 capital levy funded project.
Okay, so now's the time where I ask my question, but I'm going to let Counselor McPherson go first, and then I will follow up. Counselor McPherson.
So, again, we heard about this, thank you, through you, Mr. Chair, so we heard about this bridge last night, and, you know, the, the single, you know, the single lane, the build of it, and, you know, obviously we've got some challenges there. And I see, you know, in the, in the report that we've got a couple million dollars to replace it, is that for the two lanes? So that's a tough ask. Is that, through you to the Director of Public Works?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to the Counselor. Generally speaking, the Bailey Bridge is in good shape. We get the bridges inspected every two years by structural engineers. So overall, that Bailey Bridge is in pretty good shape. What we're asking for here is to do a bunch of welding. Again, it's more maintenance, just to keep it in a good state of repair. It is noisy, too, when cars go across, we want to, so it's really a high level of maintenance, but overall, the bridge is in good shape. You know, it is going to be complicated if we want to put in the future a large two-lane bridge in that area. We don't have much property with roads and things like that. So, you know, I think this would be a good, this is a good investment to keep the current bridge in a good state of repair. And that's what we're suggesting at this point. We don't want to let it, if we don't do this welding, it's going to deteriorate at a faster rate with vibrations and stuff, and then we're going to be into a lot more money to fix it. And we, it's an important crossing, we want to maintain that crossing. So, I mean, I do realize it's a one-lane bridge. You know, it's kind of, some people, you know, we do hear feedback, some people like the quaintness of the one-lane bridge down there, others don't. From a capacity perspective, you know, it's working with the traffic volumes through there, we don't have any concerns at this point. I mean, down the road, I think, in, you know, looking out five years, we're probably going to start looking at, you know, if, when we replace this in the future, what type of bridge should it be? But it's in good shape currently.
So, Mr. Chair, through you, Mr. Graham, is there any consideration for a walking path on the outside? So if we weld it on a walking path to make it safer for those that are navigating that bridge via walking or via bicycle, that you would consider adding that on one side of the bridge, saving $2 million and replacing the bridge?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I think that's, you know, a good idea in the future. I don't think we would do that as part of this works, but I think, you know, when we look at what is the future use of the bridge and what type of pedestrian connection we want to make across there, if we want a separate pedestrian bridge or something along this bridge, I think it's something we should look at moving forward, you know, whatever those opportunities.
Maybe it's something our Active Transportation Committee can take on.
I'm going to bring that up.
All right, thank you.
Counselor McLaughlin.
I don't have really a whole lot to say about it, just, I think it's good to keep it a one-lane bridge, just given the fact that the top of the hill is barely navigatable. You know, with that sharp S-bend and that turn, that came up in last night's meeting as well. And if we do make it a two-lane bridge, that could perhaps add more traffic than we necessarily want to see. So I'm fine with that one-lane bridge for now.
Just my yearly question and ask, and it's going to be, and hopefully I see some of those things on the operational side. You've got it, Counselor Brene, this would be a perfect opportunity for a fiberglass bridge with a bike thing. And looking at the Active Transportation, you know, we, we had an opportunity to be transformational, and this is, this is, this is a linkage that we heard last night at the Ward Three meeting, you know, you've got, it would be a perfect bypass to the Jordan Hollow. And knowing that we're redoing Main and 19th Street, and that is probably going to generate additional traffic, so, you know, let's think transformational. And then the mayor, we can cover the fiberglass bridge. They have it in Conestoga, but, you know.
Through you, Patriva, I think those are all good ideas. I was just going to highlight that we did hear a number of these ideas last night, and so, you know, adding that walking piece to it is definitely something interesting that we can, we can explore.
Number 33.
Number 33 is our Jordan Village Improvement Project Utility Relocation. This is a $1.567 million project funded through DCs to the tune of a little over 1 million and long-term borrowing of 517 million. Kudos goes out to, I think, our partners at NPEI. This number was significantly higher, a lot of, a lot of work by Director Graham and his team to get this number to what you see in front of you.
Number 34, Road Rehab.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, this is our Road Rehabilitation Program. You'll see this year, we have a $1.87 million program funded through gas tax, our Aggregate Reserve Fund, our Infrastructure Reserve Fund, and through development charges, as you've highlighted there, or as is highlighted within our revenue sources. And then below, we list the roads, as well as a colored map of the road rehabilitation projects that we're looking to undertake, both from a deteriorated roads perspective of 13 kilometers and road resurfacing of 4.5 kilometers.
Counselor Brene.
Thank you, Chair, Patriva. I just wanted to highlight and thank Director Graham. At this point, I realize this is only budget, but we're going to be talking about project 36, which is the 13th Street Road Reopening Reconstruction, that most of us on previous councils were down there to tour that over the last couple of years. And there is identified here a $200,000 in the road rehabilitation for the 13th Street Slope Repair from King Street to Horton Avenue. And I firmly believe that is a necessity because if we don't spend that $200,000, we'll be looking at additional $1 million for that section as well that we're going to be looking at in this future project. So I'm really, really glad to see that that's been identified and coupled into the Road Rehabilitation Program. Thank you.
Moving forward, project 35 is the 2020 Culvert Replacement and Rehabilitation Program, and that is a $308,000 program funded through our capital levy of $100,208 from our Infrastructure Reserve Fund. And then below are the culvert replacements that we have scheduled for 2020. 19th, Hansberger, and Hansberger. So project 36, is the, oh, sorry?
Sorry, Counselor McLaughlin.
Sorry, I'm just curious, through you to Director Dave, with that culvert rehab and replacement program, does that account for new culverts that are installed as well?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to the Counselor, so these are addressing deteriorated culverts that need to be replaced. So these are culverts in poor condition that, you know, have structural issues, and we want to get those fixed. And we typically try and align these culverts with our road programs. So some of the bigger culverts will do a year ahead of the road, that's planned later. But these are to deal with deteriorated culverts, like concrete, large concrete box culverts and those types of culverts.
Where would the funds come, should there be a need for a culvert or a request by a resident? Where would the funds come for that sort of a new installation culvert?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to the Counselor, so like a driveway culvert, those types of culverts, we would handle through, if we have to replace them, they're through our operating budget, they're smaller culverts. Whereas if a resident wants to put in a new driveway, they would pay for that culvert under a permit process.
Okay, thank you.
Project 36.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, and I apologize, I got ahead of myself there. So moving now forward to number 36, that is the 13th Street Road Reopening Reconstruction. That is a $872,500 project. It is fully funded through long-term borrowing. And you can see there the appropriated costs that make up that particular cost estimate. And I think as we heard previously through Counselor Brene, there is a benefit to us doing these works concurrently because there is some savings to be achieved. But again, subject to any questions Counsel may have, we can address these on this particular project.
Mayor Easton.
Mr. Chairman, I'm interested to know if we have any handle on the farm activity in this area. If we do, it would be quite old. I'd like to know if there's any, anything new that could be brought up to date on that.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I'll look to Dave to see if we have any, anything that's relatively new. I know I've toured this particular location. I did last year. Heard from some of the local family members in this particular area about some of their farming activities. So a lot of it would be anecdotal, but I'll look to Director Graham, should he have any more of that information.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to the mayor, I don't really have anything new to share on what was existing in place. I know you can, you can, the landowner that's directly impacted can drive around the closure and access their property still within the closure. But, you know, there are other farming activities, and I can find out more about this and report back that have to drive around as well.
Okay, I think that would be helpful, it's been some time. Thank you.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Thank you, Chair. Just unlike other projects, I see a small amount here of legal $2,500. Thank you, Chair. Just unlike other projects, I see a small amount here of legal $2,500. What exactly is that regarding?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to the Counselor. With this particular project, the solution that we're proposing here, which is the most cost-effective solution, if council would like to reopen this road, is to build an earth embankment opposed to very expensive man-made retaining walls. So, our plan is to use like a soil-earth embankment and vegetate it with vegetation, so it's more sustainable in the long term, like natural retention with all the roots and vegetation. And when we do the earth embankment, if you will, in this area, because it's kind of a ravine area, we have to get permission from the landowner to put some of this earth on their property to build the road. So we have to have some legal support to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Brene.
Thank you, Chair. Patrick, through you to the Director of Public Works. Just for some clarity, I'm just wondering if you could take us back to the discussion that we had a year ago. And I know we're not here to talk about the merits of any of these projects, but when we had this in front of us a year ago, through you, Chair, to the Director, what was the question that was asked of the council at that time last year in relation to this project?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to the Counselor. So basically, last term of council, staff brought a report forward on this road. And at that point in time, we were looking at closing this road permanently. So basically, where it's washed out, we were gonna consider disposing of that public road allowance and just making two dead ends. But council decided that, you know what, they didn't want to close this road permanently, and they asked staff to go back and look at what type of cost-effective solutions were available to consider reopening this road in the future. So that's basically what's happened since that point in time. We went back, and the cost that you have here before you is the most cost-effective solution to reopen that road, if that's something council would like to do. And I was saying earlier, we're looking at this naturalization with an embankment concept to save costs versus man-made retaining walls or sheet piling designs that could be 1.5 million. So that's kind of where we've been and where we're at right now in terms of this project, so.
Okay, thank you, Director. So, I'm just wondering if you could just also enlighten us, because I don't believe it's in the report, as to how long this road has been closed?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to the Counselor. So we had a massive storm event back in 2014, and it washed out this section of road that we're all talking about. It's like a ravine area. So it's been closed since 2014.
Okay. So I guess I've just, you know, I know we're not discussing the merits of this, but I know in 2000, at some point between 2014 and 2018, you know, we were asked to go down there. There were a number of residents that were, and I remember hearing at the time that one of the issues was that the migrant workers had lost their ability to get to the banks, to get to buy their groceries. And, you know, I guess the only point I want to bring, you know, so just for discussion as we move forward, is that, you know, anytime these roads are closed for any length of time, whether it's Frost Road that's been closed for over a decade, you know, that over time, patterns do change. And I just hope that we consider, you know, the amount of people that are impacted by this and, you know, the almost $900,000 that we're looking at. I just think that we need to have a fulsome discussion. Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Moving forward, the next project is the Aberdeen Road Slope Stability Feasibility Study and Road Widening Design. And that is a $175,000 project. And that, as per your document, is funded through the capital levy, 50%, and development charges the other 50%.
38.
Project 38 is some studying, some design work, specifically as it relates to the Beamsville Truck Route Bypass Implementation. And that is a $160,000 capital project funded from our Aggregate Resource Reserve Fund.
39.
Project 39 is Lincoln Avenue Phase One Road Construction, and that is a $2.065 million project. Again, funded, as you see there, a little over half at $1.032 million from development charges, $432,500 from long-term borrowing, and the remaining $600,000 evenly split between our Water Reserve Fund and our Sanitary Sewer Reserve Fund.
And last but not least, Rittenhouse Road Project Number 40.
So, Rittenhouse Road Reconstruction. That's a $2.65 million project funded from our Water Reserve Funds, our Sanitary Reserve Funds, development charges, and the remaining $980,000 from long-term borrowing.
Okay. Thank you very much. I think we had a good discussion tonight with these projects. We've given, you know, staff a little homework to go back, come with some more details, and we'll have another go at this next week. So thank you very much. And as I was driving this weekend, I was listening to the radio, a little curse reminder, as we come into budgeting is, the municipality's goal is not to create a 0% budget. The goal of the municipality is to deliver servants, services, to its residents. Maybe that's Freudian slip, given the time. And I've gotta get up at 5:30 to go to Concarden tomorrow. So, if there's no further questions, I have a motion to receive and file the presentation, the capital budget review. As information, we will require a mover for the motion. Vice Chair Russell. All those in favor? Okay. Confidential items, I see none. Staff remarks, we've done that throughout the presentation. Any committee remarks? I see none. There being no further business, I call this meeting adjourned.